Okay, welcome everybody. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call?
Chair Davis?
Here.
Yes.
You're not in the mic.
Vice Chair Feng.
Yes, please.
Chair Wong.
Present.
Chair Joe.
Commissioner, uh, present. That's okay.
I know. Sorry about that. Commissioner Quigg.
Present.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Okay, agenda to review. Does anybody have any changes or comments on the agenda? We're good? Alrighty. Minutes, we have one set to review from January 7th. Any changes? Comments?
I'd like to propose that we note in the minutes, if it hasn't already been stated, which I don't see, that it's a continuation of previous sessions about the application for the use permit for the wireless telecommunications. I think we've, even before I was here, I think there's been previous application meetings, I believe on April 2nd, August 23rd, and December 3rd of the previous year. So it'd be good to note that there was a lot of previous discussions and meetings and resubmissions for that.
And through the chair, we also notice one spelled word that we will correct.
Is it "closed"? That should be "closest"?
Yes.
Alrighty then. Commissioner Joe?
I don't have a total objection. I think I understand what Commissioner Wong's saying about wanting to have that, but it's always in our staff report, so we do note that for all of our other continued projects. So I would be okay with it here, because I know this is a big issue, but I don't think we include that on every minute whenever we're continuing a project, because we have often continued projects. So that's only, I mean, I understand the premise behind it. I don't have an objection to it, but I don't know if it's completely necessary.
Yeah, under 7A, line 3, it did say it was continued from December 3rd, 2018.
So it is noted already. It really isn't a need for a change.
Right, unless, I think, if Commissioner Wong's feeling was that we wanted to add more than that, just to show that it was more, but I feel okay with what's here.
Yes.
All right. We're good. So is there a motion for these minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes on January 7th, 2019.
Are we including that? Or we're just leaving it, or with the December 3rd as it is? Are we including anything further?
I thought we only have some misspelled corrections, right? That's all we got?
That's correct.
Okay.
So with that correction?
Yeah, with the correction that was being made by the director, I think we're good to go.
Is there a second?
Give me a second.
Oh, I need a second.
Oh, I'll second it then.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make a comment to thank you, because I know this has gone through several iterations, but I think it was necessary, because it is involving the cell site, and we wanted to make sure, number one, that there's no precedent, it's not setting a precedent, and number two, that there is that reevaluation every four years. So, thank you very much, although it's January, but thank you for getting those out.
And your votes. Pass is 5-0. Alrighty, next up is public communication. This is time set aside for anybody who'd like to make a statement that is in the purview of the Planning Commission, but not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody that wants to say anything? No speaker slips? Nope. Okay, we'll close that. Old business, we don't have any. Number 7 is public hearings. The first one is 646 Hemlock Avenue, a design review permit to allow the construction of a new second story and the addition and renovation to an existing single-story residence, a variance allowing less than the required minimum ground floor setback, a setback exception to allow less than the minimum second floor setbacks in the single-family residential zoning district. Staff report, Linda?
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant for 646 Hemlock Avenue is requesting design review to allow for the construction of a new second story and the addition and renovation to an existing single-story residence, a variance allowing less than the required minimum ground floor setback, and setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks in a single-family residential zoning district. The project site is located in East Millbrae, approximately one-half mile east of City Hall. Hemlock Avenue is a north-south oriented neighborhood street connecting to Hillcrest Boulevard to the south and Hermosa Avenue to the north. The existing residence located on a 6,842 square foot interior lot was built in 1945 and is described as a single-family, one-story structure. The parcel is zoned "single-family residential" and identified in the general plan as "low-density residential." The existing site contains a one-story, single-family, 1,190 square foot house with two bedrooms, one full bathroom, kitchen, dining room, closet, and living room. The project would add approximately 342 square feet to the existing ground floor and 794 square feet to the new second floor. The total additional proposed square footage is 1,136 square feet. The applicant is requesting a second floor addition greater than 500 square feet, a variance, and a second floor setback exceptions, therefore requiring Planning Commission approval. The proposed work on the ground floor includes a new pantry, laundry room, closet, half-bathroom, and one-car garage. The proposed second floor includes a new master bath, walk-in closet, master bedroom corridor, new full bath, and new office. The existing roof pitch is 512 and the proposed roof pitch would match the existing 5 and 12. So if we can look at the existing site plan, you'll notice that there's an easement along the back of the rear property. This is an odd-shaped lot, which is triangular. There is no side. There's just a front, which is the longest, kind of the hypotenuse of the triangle. Then you have a five-foot setback to the left side of the property and a 10-foot easement to the rear and to the right side. The proposed design is requesting the exception along the back and side easement. There was an existing variance that was issued. It's a legal non-conforming condition. It was issued in 1969 for the front yard to extend into the, or for the garage to extend into the front setback. This applicant is proposing to extend that variance condition to infill and allow for a larger garage. Currently, originally that space was a garage, then they converted it to a living room, and now they're converting it back to a single-car garage. Because of the odd shape of the lot, they couldn't fit in the second car garage, so they're requesting a surface parking lot to accommodate that two-car condition. The existing and proposed floor plans, this shows where they're trying to infill. The bottom on the left-hand side of the slide shows where they're infilling in the rear and the side of the properties, and then the second floor addition on top. This is a three-dimensional rendering of, that illustrates the exceptions in the request for the variance. So the purple illustrates where they're requesting the variance. The green shows the first exception to the front, which will extend out to the front of the property over the sec, over the ground floor addition. And then the red shows the second exception request, which extends over the ground floor wall, creating a flush condition from the ground floor to the second floor. This again is another proposed perspective. It illustrates the side condition where the front, the front wall is flush with the ground floor. This is the existing and proposed north elevation. This shows the proposed on the ground, and then the slide on top illustrates the existing condition. And the south elevation. And this is the proposed west elevation. In accordance with the City of Millbrae Community Development Department's Submental Requirements for Residential Development, a total of two proof-of-neighborhood consultation forms from the adjacent residences have been distributed and returned to the city staff. Both are in support of the proposed project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for the construction of a new second story and the addition and renovation to an existing single-story residence, a variance allowing less than the required minimum ground floor setback, and setback exceptions to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks in a single-family residential zoning district, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for her right now? Nope, nope, okay.
Yes, Linda. My first question is, there was a previous variance granted for a garage, one car?
Yes. In 1969, that was issued, and I believe it was 1969.
Okay, and I want to confirm, it was for use of a vehicular parking?
Yes. The initial, the initial property allowed that variance to add a garage, yes.
Okay, and that was, that was the reason why the conditional use, pardon me, the varying was granted at that time. However, did you know at some point when that conversion happened?
No, it was not a legal conversion from a garage to a livable space or conditioned space. All we have is the record that it, the garage was, it was issued a variance in 1969, and at some point between 69 and today, it was converted.
So there was an illegal conversion, change of use, from a parking space to a livable space on a variance that was granted in 1969?
Yes.
And then at this point, we're seeking... A variance on ground floor setback?
We're seeking a variance to allow an expansion on the ground floor to accommodate a park, a garage, but because of the shape of the lot, we can't, we can't make it two cars, so what we're doing is promoting, proposing that the single-car garage is adequate, and then a surface parking garage would be.
I understand. So we're asking for a ground floor setback variance, number one?
Correct.
And then we have a couple setbacks on this, exceptions on the second floor?
Correct.
One on the front, one on the north, on the side?
Correct. So it would be the front, the second floor at the front extends about six feet over the property line, or over the setback, into the setback, I should say. And then on the side, there would be no setback.
So it's a triple's exception?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to correct that, the variance, we don't allow variances on the ground floor, so that's why we're issuing the, the request is for a variance rather than an exception for the ground floor.
But we don't allow exceptions on the ground floor?
Correct.
That's why it's a variance?
Correct.
There currently is a one-car garage? It looked like there was a one-car garage.
Yes, but it's converted.
Currently, no. Currently, it is a livable, it's habitable space.
But it looks like a garage. It looks like they already took the original garage and made it, you know, living quarters.
Correct. So originally, it was a garage, then it was converted into livable space. Now they're converting it back to garage.
Not entirely.
So, through the chair, so part, as it relates to just the garage component of the request, we had essentially a variance to authorize the existing garage space that was illegally converted. Part of this request is to widen that garage out, and so because the garage is projecting into the front yard by five feet, it's setback at 50, where 20 feet is required, they want to stay consistent with that line, so that's the subject of the variance portion. That's the only, that's the only avenue they have to make that request is through a variance. The upper-level portions that aren't aligned with, that don't have the additional 10 feet from the side, that's part of an exception request, and then also above the garage on the second floor is the second exception request.
I guess my question is, because when I drove down there today, it looked like there was a garage. Are we making it larger, but not enough for two cars?
Correct. Also, to point out that there is an easement, so that prohibits any construction into that area.
So, if we're not going to gain another parking space, why are we going to make it larger and have to grant a variance, if I think I'm understanding this correctly?
The construction of the ground floor is also to facilitate the construction of the second floor, so the variance will actually bring out, add square footage and satisfy the garage requirement, in part.
Generally, if we're not going to get the second space, I don't see why we have to grant a variance, and maybe they just need to work with the bottom footprint, so we don't have to deal with the variance.
Well, I believe that the owners do want a garage, but there's no possible way, this is, this is a perfect condition for an exception or a variance, because we have the constraint, we're encumbered by that easement.
What we already have is there, but for us to grant a variance and really not gain a second parking spot, maybe they need to work within, you know, go up from the existing footprint, so we don't, I mean, variances are, I mean, they're not an exception.
Right.
So, since we're not gaining anything, and there is an existing variance there that was done in 69, my thought is, why, why are we doing this and having to grant another variance?
So the variance is to accommodate at least partial conformance with the requirements. So we have a two-car garage requirement. There's no way that we're going to meet that in any condition, so at least we have the one-car garage, which is what the applicant has.
That's my question, then. It looks to me like there is a one-car garage there now.
Through the chair, I think, and we could have the architect speak to this as well, but what I think the notion is, is that the widening of the garage is to make the garage more functional, such that it can really accommodate a car, by more of today's standards. So if you look at sheet A 1.1, where they're showing the garage being parked in there, that the, I think the garage is being widened by, where is it, Linda?
Correct.
How many feet is it?
I believe it's six feet.
Like, six feet is the amount that's being widened, which would fully accommodate one parking space fully enclosed, and then we would get the second parking spaces, just that it would not be fully enclosed, it would be on the driveway.
Right, it's still going to be in the driveway.
So, just so we, sorry, Commissioner Quigg. Yeah, but I just want to clarify one thing. The previous exception, or let me rephrase, the previous variance that was granted back in 69 was to give them a garage.
Correct.
Okay. It was supposed to be used as a garage.
Correct.
They use it as a dining room.
At some point between 1969 and 2019.
I wasn't concerned about the timing here, but rather is the intent, right? So it was granted as a garage, but they use it as a dining room, and they could have used it as a garage instead of a dining room?
Yes.
Okay, and by looking at the previous plan, on 1.1, on the previous plan, there's enough space to park a car with the current configurations where the garage is supposed to be. And with the new proposal, they're essentially taking some of the illegal converted space and to legally using it as a dining room forever, and creating additional space for the garage that was supposed to be previously a garage to begin with.
Correct.
And not to also, not to also miss one point, is that this variance, if granted, would create a condition based, the second level exception that they're seeking, was also based upon the approval of this particular variance, otherwise they're, they don't even have a foundation.
Correct.
Where the second level would be built on.
Correct.
Right, so I think the exceptions on a second level is dependent upon this variance to be approved, otherwise it's a moot point.
I do think we need to ask that of the architect or engineer, because I mean, I suppose there's a way in which they could cannilyver the building without, if you didn't authorize the variance for the widening in the garage, and they were still requesting the second floor to be at that line, I suppose there are structural ways that could be accommodated.
Let's, if, through the chair, if it's okay, let's get the applicant online, and then we'll figure out the rest. Unless other commissioner have comments?
Does anybody else have any questions? Right now? All right, can we have the applicant come up, please?
You waiting on me? All right, I'm Sean Scott, homeowner with, at 646 Hemlock. What do you want to know?
Is your architect?
No, my architect is not.
Your architect is not here?
He's not available.
Okay, because most of our questions were probably for him. Tell us why you're doing this? Why does the garage need to be wider, perhaps? I think that's a question we all have.
When we bought the house in the current state, the living space, well, not the living, quote-unquote, "living space" in garage was the same. We left it as such, know that, knowing that we had plans on adding on to the house. Part of widening it is to have the garage configured to actually hold a one-car vehicle, get a car off the street, and that's pretty much the reason to expand the garage six feet, is to have it actually hold a one-car, legally. Space inside's not as big as you may think it is, or what it looks like. It's very short and compact inside, and that's why we're asking for the six feet there. As for, as for the variances on the setbacks, it's to accommodate the living space that we want. As for, as for the variances on the setbacks, it's to accommodate the living space that we want, pretty plain and simple.
Does anybody have questions for him?
Yeah, Mr.?
Sean.
Sean. Mr. Scott, Sean Scott, okay, yeah, got it, got it, okay. You're the property owner?
Yes.
I think. And, and how long have you owned the property?
Three and a half years, Carol? Almost three years.
Almost three years. And when you purchased it, the dining room, living area, is already encroaching into the garage as it's being?
Property as it sits, is how we purchased it.
I see. So, you purchased it without a garage? Okay. Are you aware that this previous modification of the house was done without the benefit of a permit?
Yes.
Okay, so you were aware of it?
When I purchased the home, yes.
Okay. And when you engaged the architect to try to remodel your house, I mean, obviously, this is a sizable increase in the, in the square footage, and to accommodate your growing family, and I understand that. Was there any thought given into it to try to do the expansions, and that would convert the illegal converted space back to a garage, and so that you can add on top of that footprint?
That was the first thing we went over, was making the garage back a legal garage, and then expanding and building up over top of the home. Because of the pie-shaped lot, we can't go left or right, we got to go up.
Right. Did you come up with a plan that is feasible for your purpose?
Excuse me?
Without, without having to go through the variance, and additional variance and additional setback exceptions?
I'm, I'm sure we could have, if we wanted to leave the garage space as tiny as it is, I'm sure we could have, and then that would also cut into the living space we're trying to build up top.
Because the, based on the configuration on the plan that is being shown, the current gar-
Everything's based on the, the pie-shaped lot, and us not being able to go north and south in our, on our, on our lot.
Right. I, I guess what I was trying to say was, the current configuration, the existing configuration of the house, where your dining room is, which used to be a garage, or should have been a garage, was about 20 by 12, which is sufficient enough to park one vehicle. Was there thought given into it to convert it back to a legal state where it was supposed to be designed for?
Sure, during my, during my addition, absolutely. I, I don't want to spend money twice, so I want to do it during an addition. So, why would I go spend 20, $30,000 to convert it back to a garage, and then work on top of that? I'm doing it economically by putting it all in one budget.
I understand you're not going to want to do the same work twice, and we're not encouraging that. What I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to understand the effort behind the design that tried to conform to the setback and, yeah, to basically to the planning code, to the setback requirement that we do have in this town, so that it doesn't require a triple exception in this case. It, it is a triple exception that you're asking.
I want to build a home the way I would like my home to be, and if it, and if it took me to get exceptions or, or anything else, then I'm willing to, I'm willing to put that out there, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I'm going to go for what I want first, and then scale back.
Fair enough.
Does anybody else have questions for him right now?
I just have one that's a little bit unrelated. On the second floor, the office, that level, I noticed toward the right, I'm trying to get the dimensions. It looks like there's a door and a stairway, is that what's going, maybe if we can call up the plans, but it looks like there's a door, or is that just a closet?
That may be just a closet.
The closet?
In that room, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, so the only way to get in and out of that office is via the hallway from the rest of the second floor?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that part of it.
Mr. Scott, one more question. If you look at the plan, 1.2, if you can read that. Basically, it's the floor plan of your proposed second floor.
Okay.
So, look at the popo, is that 1.2? I don't think it is. There you go, that's it. So, you see that you have an office on the right-hand side, you have the master bedroom on the left-hand side. The office is where you're seeking the, the double setback exceptions, one in the front, one on the north side. And that you're labeling that space as a new office. Now, what I'm seeing here is between grid line three and grid line four, between grid line B and grid line C, there is a big space that's open to below, you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any thought that given into this to incorporate some of that space into part of your livable square footage on the second floor? So, you can scale back on the office side, so that you don't have to encroach into that setback exception?
No. That was what I asked for, and that's what my architect gave me.
Can you speak into the mic?
That was not what I asked for. My architect gave me what I asked for.
So, the proposal that is being shown here is what you asked, right? But I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to understand here?
And you're asking me, did I think about shortening that, that hallway in order to not encroach? No, I did not.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
So, my initial impression on the design was that, yeah, it is an odd-shaped lot, you're trying to work with, within it, the best of your ability to make a nice livable house, to suit your needs, and that there is issues with the driveway, and I, that's my first impression, is that there's very limited parking space. And what we're trying to do now is, you know, looking at the code and the intent of the code, is to make sure that we not only balance your needs, but to balance the needs of the neighborhood, and issues that the neighbors may have, and, you know, meeting our code. The parking is a big concern, because I noticed that you're shortening your driveway from, what is it now, because it meets the existing 20-foot setback right now, to, well, whatever it is now, it, it shortens the driveway to six feet length. So, six feet length, if you were to park a car in front of your garage, that knew that's the way it's proposed, it would stick out into the sidewalk. So, you're taking away any parking available in front of your garage here?
It's not being lengthened, it's being widened.
Widened, okay, so.
So, yeah, so the, yeah, so the existing, the existing home, the way that the previously approved garage that's been illegally converted, is, that will not project any further towards the street. It would just be widened to accommodate a car.
So, then, there's still the same principle remains, is that you'll have one parking space, but is there a way to design it, like I notice in the corner, the, the northern corner, there's a little triangle area to possibly, would you, have you thought about having parking space there, it's where it says turf, so that there's more parking available?
So, if, if you're facing the garage, look at the garage?
Right.
Just to the right of it, there's a little cove here, where a vehicle can fit.
Sorry.
Little cove, there's a little cove there where a vehicle can fit. You go to the left in my garage, yes, another vehicle can fit there as well.
So, where it says, that the proposed plan is for turf now, you know, to make it parking more available for the neighborhood, and to avoid having cars hanging out into the sidewalk, you could possibly put in a driveway there to make more parking?
Have you visited the site?
Uh, no, I have not. You tell me about it.
The street ends, so once you, once you pass my front door, you've got to cross the street. You can't walk, there's no sidewalk left to walk on, besides my, besides my driveway, and it ends.
So, you're saying you cannot put a parking spot there where the turf is?
No, I can, but you said protrude now to, into the street, into the sidewalk area. There's no more sidewalk to protrude into, sir. You have to go across the street in order to walk safely on the block.
Okay, well, there's on this, in front of your house, it looks like there's the sidewalk and proposed curb cut, right there?
Yes. Yeah, because there's going to be new concrete, so we have to propose the curb cut, because the concrete there now is pretty dilapidated and beat up, so when we do the construction, we're going to have to cut a new curb, and we have to cut a gutter in as well.
So, that's a benefit for the neighborhood, then, to improve, make improvements there?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So, those are the things we're looking at, and then also, you know, you do have this sort of corner lot, so that, you know, for the aesthetics of the neighborhood, by not having that side setback on the northern side, it'll look just like a big giant blank wall. So, if you're able to add more architectural elements to make it, uh-
There will be hardscaping there.
Make, for the second story to the fourth story, to make it not just look like a big wall, then it would improve the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood. And, you know, if, given that if you're asking for the variance, and, and I see that a lot of your architect's designs, it calls out these variants, it calls out these exceptions, very clear, so I give you kudos for that, for calling that out. But then meeting the intent of that side setback, you know, again, to not just have a blank wall facing, you know, the neighborhood, but to add some architectural elements, or even like minimal amount of-
So, the architectural elements on top will be, the whole top of that side, the north side of my building, will be wrapped in redwood siding, along with, along with the windows.
Right, but just for the material, that's good, but then for the shape and the massing of the building, again, it would just look like a, like also, even if there had a, some amount of setback, like a couple feet, I'm not sure if the other commissioners would agree, but I think it would look, you know, nicer for the neighborhood if there was even just more breakup of this big, flat wall, and have more of a, even a minimal setback, one, couple feet, and, we're trying to-
You're talking depth of the home.
On the second story?
In terms of, in terms of neighbors coming around the corner, seeing depth of the home rather than a straight wall.
Right, right, that looks like a warehouse or a big office building.
Sure, sure.
And then also, just the materials that you chose, again, you pointed out the wood on the, above the garage for the second story, you know, to make it not look like just an add-on, I know it's going to be new, it's going to be new materials, it's going to look nice, but in terms of just matching the elements from the main home to the second story above the garage, if you had some matching elements or wood somewhere, or some design elements to make it blend together, then it wouldn't look as much just like an added-on addition on top of your garage, which a lot of people do.
Sure, but I drove the neighborhood for a while, to see what was fitting in the neighborhood, and I've seen that a couple times, so I'm going to stick with that.
So, we're trying to improve the neighborhood and make your property values and the property values of the neighbors better?
Again, I've drove the neighborhood, and I've seen that same setting, so I'm-
So, you, you know, these are the suggestions and recommendations we're giving to you.
Sure.
In order for you to, you know, take the chance of having us approve of it, to, to provide some compromise, give and take, and try to understand what we're trying to ask you for, so that we would feel good about the neighborhood, and for your neighbors, and to approve of your project, so I hope you consider some of these suggestions.
Sure.
Any other questions for him right now?
I do. I must say that your, the house is very well-kept, and this looks like it will be lovely. My concern is a variance, and if I'm not mistaken, it is only through staff, just please bear with me, it is only, the variance is because we are enlarging the existing variance by six feet, is that correct?
Yes, it's a variance because it's on the ground floor and not the second floor, otherwise it would be an exception.
I know, but unfortunately, it is a variance. So, we are talking about six feet, is that right?
Correct.
Yes?
Correct.
Five feet?
Okay.
I think it's five feet.
Yeah, it, it's a minimal amount. If the existing living quarters, I've kind of made a little square here, the dining room would still be adequate, wouldn't it? With six feet less?
Well, that dining area is garage, we're going to put it back to a legal garage, so there won't, there won't be a dining area, the dining area will be now behind the garage.
Okay, what am I missing here?
So, the, the, the six feet that we're asking for is to widen the garage, and then the dining area, I don't know what page you have open, but on the dining, the dining now would be-
I'm looking at 1.1.
So, there's your dining area back there. So, your dining area is now behind there, right there with the half bathroom, the powder room?
Yes.
And then your dining space is right there behind, behind there, along with the, along with the laundry, and the, and the pantry. So, the existing garage that is there, which is, which was when we purchased the home, was already, quote-unquote, "living quarters," it's going to go back to a garage with the six feet added on to it, and then, obviously, with the house being extended towards the back, we're going to add our dining room there, along with the laundry and the pantry right there.
I just have a real problem with a variance. There are very, very few, and I have a real problem with a variance. I would tend to think that without the variance, that it might, you could still add on, and it wouldn't make it that much smaller. What would the difference in, in the upstairs be?
I don't know, I haven't done the square footage any other way.
Can staff figure that out?
Yeah, so, just so I can-
And if the variance was not granted, and put back the way it was, basically, but you're making the back larger also.
One moment, are, are we still asking questions, or are we actually having a discussion right now?
I had a question.
I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, because it's starting to feel a lot like discussion.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we'll come back to it.
I'll ask it later.
We'll ask all these questions, it just feels like we're going a little too far down.
Right.
Okay. So, I think that's all for now, but we might have more for you later. Okay. Does anybody from the public want to speak on this? Do we have any speaker slips on this item? No? Okay, we'll close the public comment on that. So, now, we can ask a gajillion questions.
So, if the variance was not granted, how much, and, and we granted the, the setback exception, how much smaller would the house be?
So, if you did not grant the variance for the garage widening, that represents 50 square feet. It's, it's a six-by, sorry, five-by-10 square addition under the garage. So, if that weren't granted, they would be, and, and regardless, we still have a compliance issue, right? So, that needs to be rectified. So, in theory, we could require that to be converted back to the garage that it was legally built as, so then you'd have the one-car parking space, it would cause them to have to likely reconfigure the inside, because I believe the dining room has been configured as such.
But it looks like, I mean, I, it, to me, it looks like it's still going to be large.
Right, so, I mean, just to answer your question, it's a-
We're, we're making it so it's not usable.
I guess to answer your question very specifically, it's a 50-square-foot reduction, and then they'd have to do some internal configurations to make that, that garage be, be usable, and then they'd have to, from a structural perspective, have to make some considerations about how they would add on the second floor, because they'd no longer have the benefit of the ground floor down to the ground, so they'd either have to shift the second floor, or cannilever it in some manner.
They would still, I mean, if they want to make the upstairs the way it is, it could be cannilevered, or if they make the upstairs a little bit smaller to coincide with what the garage is there right now.
Yeah, sure, I mean, there are a number of ways to reconfigure, I think we heard from the applicant, this is the proposal that they wanted to go with, we did work with their architect on all of these types of concerns, knowing that variances are, are the exception rather than the rule. Exceptions have been a little bit-
Well, the exceptions are already not the rule, but then-
I meant the variance, I'm sorry, the variance.
Variance, right.
The variance is the exception, not the rule.
Yeah.
And then the exceptions, we see a little bit more often, but we, we try to-
Are too often lately, but-
Right, and we, and we try to mitigate that to the best we can. I think in staff's analysis, the location, the site, and then the easement, and the, sort of to the north where the railroad tracks are, where- where the railroad tracks are were some of the considerations we gave for why we were recommending the way we were.
Can I just read from the staff report for a moment?
Sure.
Due to the triangular shape of the lot and encumference of a rear easement that reduces the develop-a-lot area, the proposed design represents the best and only option for development without creating new, non-conforming conditions. In this circumstance, the strict application of zoning regulations is found to deprive the subject property of development enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under the identical zoning classification. That's a pretty strong statement, that you guys have done this. You've looked at a lot of the options. It was in planning department for more than six months. I assume that there was discussions with the architect. Unfortunately, couldn't be here. That would help if he or she was here. But, I mean...
Yes.
This wasn't done with capriciousness.
Well, no.
In any way, I'm not saying, but I mean, it wasn't... And there already is a variance on the garage because the garage already is into the front, right? So the house, the property has a variance attached to it. So we're not adding a new variance, we're modifying it. Is that what we're doing?
Intensifying it.
Okay. But it, it already came with the variance.
Yeah, for that purpose, I mean, I see it's already, if it's already, you know, bumped out, you know, my point of view is I wouldn't see any issues with granting the modified variance because it's already pre-existing, sort of, although it's been widened just as...
I mean, one thing, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, but, sorry to cut you off. One thing that we must consider carefully is that the variant was granted back in 1969. It was for a single purpose, for vehicular parking. And that was what it's for.
And that's what it's for now.
And that's supposed to be, and that's what it's supposed to be for today.
That's what it's for.
Well, what I'm saying is, it was, it was approved at that time as a vehicular parking. Somehow later, it was converted to a living space.
Oh.
We should not exacerbate that.
It's for a garage.
Well, it...
The homeowner, the current homeowner had nothing to do with the conversion.
No, I'm not saying he had anything to do with it.
Right, and he wants to put it back to a garage, which is what it's supposed to be. This is a good thing.
Well...
We're getting the garage back.
It is gonna put it back where it is.
Not necessarily, because a portion of the, I'm sorry. A portion of the garage that used to be approved will forever become a living space, if you look at 1.1. And then they're adding that additional five feet so that they can put in a new garage with half the garage it was before and half new.
Not even half.
It, I, I don't, it's... It doesn't even look like half on the plans.
Okay. I'm reading the plan just fine. Look.
I am missing something.
One second.
I'm sorry.
That's right. We're talking about a variance for six feet, the way I understand it.
He's incorrect how he's describing it. It's going back to a garage. 100% going back to a garage, being extended out six feet. The dining area will be behind that, whether you see a wall where the powder room is, along with the laundry room and the pantry. We'll also share that, that space.
If I may, through the chair, I think, what if you, on the plans there, if you can show us where the wall is for the existing garage right now? It's that line, right, that vertical line, right in the middle of the car? No, no, going up and down. What is the existing wall that you have now? That's the existing wall? And then what are you extending out? So I think that's what, so you're existing, so that's where I think the question is coming to, is that, is that making a new garage space?
Well, actually...
I think that's what the question...
If you're looking at 1.1, it looks like the front of the garage is a new exterior wall also. I don't know, I'm looking at the little...
As a variance.
At the bottom, and says, "The dark color is a new exterior wall." So that means this wall is new, and this wall is new, and this wall is new.
Which is what it's supposed to be.
I mean, I may not be reading this correctly, but I'm just looking...
Through the chair. If you can focus your attention onto the slide, I'm gonna try to use the mouse to show exactly what we're talking about.
Can you make that full screen?
Well, somebody can, let's...
Somebody can. Sam, can you help him? Can you make that image full screen? Get rid of that, that toolkit on the side? Thank you.
The subject of the variance request is this square right here. So the garage at some point, that's what I think we're trying to understand, is what was the original footprint of the garage? That's what we're trying to understand. Under this scenario, we have the dining room here, powder room behind the garage. It would be, if approved, bumped out, which would give more room for this garage to fit in that space. The question is if the project never moved forward, we have an illegal conversion, and if the city were to require this to be converted back to a garage and/or get permits to do it, where would the parking be consistent with the originally approved garage? If you're able to answer that?
They would have to cut into a portion of the dining room.
It would only take...
The dining room's...
The dining room's completely moving.
A 0.3.
Sheet A 0.3, the bottom right, is a diagram of where the existing overlays with the new.
Which one is it?
What do you want us to look on that?
Sheet A 03, there's a diagram that shows where the existing is on the first floor.
Right.
Which detail?
The dash line at the bottom right.
Okay.
Which detail?
Two.
Detail two. The dash line is where the existing's supposed to be.
Right, correct, that's what I...
Okay, so what I'm seeing is on the right-hand side of the property, 1/8 scale, excuse me. There's a 12-by-21 space, a rectangle, that seemingly was intended to be a garage when it was first approved back in 1969.
1969.
I, I can't confirm if that was the intent, what...
Well, it was intended, well, it was granted a variance at the time for vehicular parking.
Correct.
Oh.
There was a 12-by-21 space right here. This.
Yeah, right.
That's the assumption. There were no, there were no drawings that were associated with the variance, application and permit.
But it would be sensible to think that that would be the intended where the garage's supposed to be.
Correct.
And that part of that was eating into a dining area later on. So had this been converted back to a parking space, they wouldn't have required a variance. And they can still add to the house, to the second story on top of that.
We are converting it back to a garage. It's being converted back to a garage.
And I understand that you are converting a portion of it back to a garage.
No, the whole thing is going back to a garage.
I think the, what's the, if you look at the plans...
I'm all ears.
There's what looks like the garage side wall for the dining room is into what looks like a square that was the old garage. So it looks like the dining room has crept into the old garage. And that's what I think he's talking about, is that little portion, you're close, you're right in there. That little, that wall right there, it looks like that's the other, this side's the dining room, right? Right, that's what we mean. He thinks that that was what, he's worried that that, I'm paraphrasing...
Mr. Scott, this run right here, this space right here was supposed to be a garage. Before.
In 1969.
Back then, not when I purchased the home.
Yeah.
I guess we don't know now. But what we do know...
Excuse me?
I guess we don't know now, right? But what we do know now is that this space here requires a variance to get, an additional variance. But back then, this space somehow was approved as a, as a parking space.
Okay, we've established that a long time ago, so why are we going backwards on 1969, when I was born, when we were trying to show you that we are turning it back into a complete garage and asking for six feet? The dining is going on the backside of it, along with the powder room, the laundry, and the pantry. 1969 has no relevance to today, zero. Because we're moving forward, sir.
Right now, also, is that if you were to take up that space, you'd have space for two cars in the planned garage. And what's the requirement, staff? Can you tell me for parking requirements with the design of a single-family home?
10-by-20 for one car, 400 square feet for a two-car garage.
For a house of this size, what's required? How many parking spaces are required for a home?
It would be 400 square feet.
So that'll be clear, rock to rock.
Well, this is, this is my question. If we can't make the required two cars inside parking, then I don't see why we should be granting a variance. It's not an exception, it's a variance for six feet. And to me, we're intensifying a variance. And I think if we were to take that six feet off, you would still have a very, very comfortable upstairs. I mean, if we could have made it so we got a full two-car garage, you know, then maybe, you know, you might feel a little bit more inclined. But we're still only gonna have a one-car garage, which is what the variance was for in 69. This is, it's not a tiny house.
So through the chair, I think the, the premise that staff was operating under was that there had always been a one-car garage that was authorized for this home. This request, albeit, yes, there has been an illegal addition. We saw it as a way to be able to recapture that single, that single-car garage that had historically had been approved. And then in, in our estimation, in our viewpoint, the request for the 50 square feet of variance, we found that to be very nominal, given the circumstances of the lot and the surroundings. And of course, that's certainly all before commission, rather. And, and, and that's the subject of your conversation this evening. And I'm just trying to give you the perspective on how staff made our recommendation.
Also, I'd like to point out again that if it were not for the easement, we would be able to encroach or move out five feet. So that five feet, we would be able to use if it were not for the easement.
The widening?
Correct.
The easement's in the way.
Correct.
The easement in the back?
The easement is in the back, how it's in the way?
The easement is along the entire backside because there is no, there is no side to this property. It's a triangular lot, so that entire backside is an easement. And that's a 10-foot easement. So if you, if you technically review the drawing, it's only required to have a five-foot setback, I believe. So you could build out, but because we, we don't have that...
A setback in the rear, you mean?
Correct.
So you can shift the house back, is what you're trying to say?
No, you would just be able to use the easement to build out that ground floor. The, the variance wouldn't be an issue if we didn't have the easement there.
But yeah, we would still have a variance because it's in the front setback that the issue is. It's not in the back.
Yeah, it has something to do with the back easement.
It wouldn't, the easement wouldn't make a difference. You'd have the feet, but not the... Anyway, those are my comments.
Staff, what I'm hearing on my two sides is Kishna Quigg doesn't want to intensify it and Commissioner Fung is worried about the dining room...
Well, let me, let me...
Sort of getting grandfathered in as living space. Talking about precedent, talking about setting any kind of new standard or anything else, do you see any issues with that? Or is this property so unique in being a triangle with an easement and no neighbor and everything else?
That, that is our viewpoint, yes.
Let me just give my two cents here. I think in order for us to grant a triple combination of exception and variance, there had to be some really compelling reason. I mean, this is a triple exception here, if you will. Right, it's not a single exception that we're granting. It's a variance plus two exceptions. Personally, I'd like to see more effort in design to, to be more conforming to our design standard so that it doesn't require the triple exception in this case. And I think it could be done. Just gotta be a little bit more creative about it. I mean, I see a lot of space on the second floor that could be used without having to require those two additional exceptions on the front and the north side. There is a little bit more space in the back that they could encroach into without requiring any more exceptions. I, I think a little bit more effort on the design could be, could be fruitful here. Those are my comments.
Linda, can you tell us a bit about the history of how much effort was put into the design? Was it one and done, or did you guys go back and forth, back and forth?
You know, um...
No, this application was submitted in July of, of, actually, I believe it was 2017.
Not 18?
You know, I did see some 17s in there. I thought I did. Right here, on these. I thought maybe it was a misprint. 10-26-17.
Staff has gone through at least six iterations of resubmittals. So that's at least six months of back and forth with the architect, just preparing the drawings in a, to get them in a format that could be presentable, to conceptually present the concept. When they first came to the counter, they were requesting an exception. We couldn't offer the exception because it was on the ground floor. We did recognize that there was the easement, and staff felt that given the, the location of the property, which is in a highly intensified parking area, that it was better for the overall neighborhood to provide one parking space, at least covered and closed, and then use surface parking where we could, which is on the easement. You can still use the easement for parking, but you can't build anything on it. So we knew we wouldn't be able to build a structure there. The request to do the second floor, because the lot is, is technically considered an internal lot, it's not a corner lot, but there is no, there's no adjacent property. There's no impact to anyone on that side of the property. We felt that that was a, a good location to have that flush condition from the ground floor to the second floor. So if you were gonna add any mass or bulk to the structure, it would be at that location. We felt that the property that was on the right side, how they utilized the yard and what they did with the development on the ground floor on, on the opposite side of the property was well-thought-out. For their needs internally, they seemed to be happy with what they wanted. There wasn't, they did express that they wanted to have a large office. I believe the owner has a business and he works from home, so he wanted to enhance the large office space. We did work extensively with the applicant and the architect on this.
Thank you.
Just to put in my two cents, you know, for the first-floor variance, you know, I see that this is a very odd-shaped lot and that the home has this kind of odder shape in the back. It's not the typical rectangular-style layout, but it's truncated by the easement. And that, you know, it looks like they're trying to do their best to provide a nice architecturally-looking home. It would enhance the neighborhood. There is an existing variance. I know that with the one-car garage, the existing 13, 12 and 1/2 feet is very small. So even if they widen it and it still only fits one car, you still use the garage for other purposes, storage and so forth, too. So it could be used for that purpose. I do have issues, though, given that, like I could see, you know, some architectural improvements. Maybe clearly addressing that there is that secondary parking on the side of the garage or a space for that so that it does meet the requirement for two parking spaces. So I have an issue with the not meeting the second-story setback because that's to code and it could have been addressed. because that's to code and it could have been addressed. But out of, you know, I see the difficulties and the hardship with this odd geometry lot and the pre-existing variance for the garage. So I wouldn't have an issue with extending it another five feet.
Okay. Can I have, I had a couple of questions, if you can, please. And if we can pull up A11 again, that would be great. Okay, thank you. In terms of the kitchen and the dining room, at this point, you're, you're not, you're looking at leaving it as it is. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Was there any discussion at all about that in the dining room, the right side, that joins the garage of maybe that wall being, that wall being taken out? Because what it's looking like is that, right? Because right now, I think what's coming up as an issue is that it looks like the dining room and, you know, we, I understand that it wasn't your doing, but the dining room is jutting into the garage by about four-and-a-half feet. And that's what's causing that garage to be unusable and that's why you're having to extend it on the other side another five feet. And I think what the commissioners are having, the other, my fellow commissioners are, I think, are feeling like is if you didn't have that dining room budding, kind of budding into the garage, then you wouldn't need to extend that garage out another five feet on that side and then require that exception. Does that make sense? So there's a, right now, there's that square. And then you have, right in the middle of it, next to the, the car, there's the dining room wall that kind of juts into that rectangle. And I think that's what's causing it to be unusable for you in terms of a garage. So has there been some discussion into, some consideration into maybe, I know it means moving a wall, but I think that wall probably wasn't there to begin with, is my feeling. And you are going to do some construction. So having that, getting rid of that budding into the garage section instead of having to extend it out, was there any discussion of that?
No, zigzagging wall, I left it where it was.
Okay. And in terms of the office upstairs, right now, the, so one point two? In terms, right, one more, I think, going forward. Was there some consideration into maybe moving it so that instead of having your off? So right now, the shape is rectangle to the side and then going up, right? So instead of doing that, it looks like on the, above where the kitchen would be downstairs, that there's some space up there, that it could have expanded that way. And that there, there could have been some more use of space. I'm trying to describe it, don't know how to describe it. But where your office doesn't have to jut all the way to the end and the front, the top, right? But that space, you can't use that space. It's not twenty? Twenty, no, from the second floor, it's a ten-foot. So I think there should be some space to be able.
Did I answer your question? No.
No, okay.
I had my architect, I had my architect obviously measure my lot. And I said, "Take all that you can so I get what I want for my family."
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm trying to come up because, to be honest with you, I think we're the direction of my fellow commissioners. It kind of feels like it's going against you. So I'm trying to work on something to see, you know, is there a way that you can get what you need? You need, you want an office, which I totally get.
No, I, I want a comfortable living space for my family.
Well, I'm talking about the office space. The, the rest of it is not, doesn't seem to be an issue. So it's the, that space that's above the garage right now. If there's a way to get that space where it's not, that, in a way, that's kind of creating the need for the three, the three special circumstances. The one variation and the two setbacks. So if, setback expectation. So if there is a way to be able to bring that in, it might be able to, to solve that problem. So just a thought. And I guess that hasn't been questioned.
One other comment to make. And I think staff agreed that if he needs the extra space, it could maybe be cantilevered or something like that upstairs.
So if we go back to the cantilever issue on the side house where Mr. Wong brought up saying, said, when they come around that corner looking like a warehouse, what is the cantilever going to look like? It's going to look just as bad. It's going to look like a house hanging over a garage.
Any other comments?
Nope, I think I've made all my comments. We're talking about fifty square feet that's causing an intensification of a variance, which is.
I would argue if there is a lot in this town that's more goofy than this, I want to see it.
We all vote.
That's true. I'm just going to say that if there was ever a place where exceptions and variances might come up, it's this lot. The house that, I mean, the house looks beautiful.
Yes.
I mean, it's a lovely house.
I think better design could have been in place to, to lessen the intensification of these exceptional situations.
Does staff want to comment on, without creating new non-conforming conditions? What, that's what's driving it, is the variance, right? So, so other things were considered. And when you said, "What if we do it?" Oh, never mind, what if we go, never mind. I mean, is that, is that what happened when you were going back and forth with the architect and on design?
Yeah, to, to a great extent. We spent several hours discussing the options of just the exceptions versus the variance. Could we add to the other side of the house? Could we add to the back? Again, the biggest inhibitor was the, the easement. They also have power lines. This is, I believe the easement is owned by Southern Pacific Railroad. So there are additional power lines overhead. So there's, it's further back, but it, it does limit the design.
Ms. Robinson, what about the idea? If we were to get, let's say, for sake of argument, let's say you get the variance. Could they do away without the exceptions on the second floor by leveraging some of the space on the, the high ceiling spots and some of the areas in the back that have not been added to? And still create two comfortable bedroom-like environment up there? I mean, this is, I mean, I know they label it as an office, but this is clearly a four-bedroom house that's being proposed here.
There's two setback exceptions.
Correct.
I believe there is definitely, it is a design issue. We spent an awful lot of time discussing the design and this was probably the best solution for everyone. But again, if, if we just add another design parameter, then it just becomes another design problem. So I do believe there is a solution to it, but it will take some redesign. I don't know if that's something that the applicant would be able to tolerate.
Three exceptions, two exceptions and one variance, to me, seems like a lot. I'll stop there.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll just make a comment though. I think, I mean, I know we've been mentioning that it's a lot and I, I'm, I tend to not want to do exceptions whenever we can. I think there's a reason why we came up with, we have the zoning code. Having said that, I feel like this lot is a different lot and the shape of it's different. And then there's no neighbor on that side. You know, I mean, it's the end of, kind of the end of a street. So, I mean, so if there is ever going to be an exception or a variance, I, I feel like this is not that glaring to me. I mean, if, it depends on the lot, depends on the circumstances. And I think the, the shape of the lot, the fact that the easement, that restricts any other. Yes, I would have liked to, I feel like maybe there could have been some adjustment. But, but then staff has been working back and forth with the architect to try to come up with that adjustment. And it seems like there's not a lot that's going, unless you get really cost, you know, it can be cost prohibitive at some point. So, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of feeling like if, if we were to do an exception, I would feel more comfortable with this one. And I would kind of more concur with Commissioner Davis in that, in that sentiment.
As I've said before in the past, in general, you know, our, our rules and regulations are out there, but we have to apply them to the real world. And that includes shape of the lot, topography, slope and everything else. And that's where the exceptions come in. You can't make everything fit perfectly every single time. And this is the goofiest lot we've seen yet in my tenure. We've seen some other slopy ones and a few other things, but this is the weirdest lot I've ever seen. I'm comfortable with the plans as they are. I'd like to make one statement again though, that even though there is no neighboring adjacent home on the north side, that, you know, this is even more highlighted for the neighborhood because people drive down Hemlock, that, you know, people are going to see this as the first sign, "Welcome to our neighborhood." And if it's a big wall, it is non-conforming, then what does that say about the neighborhood and about Millbury and about the planning, planning that we put in, in efforts? However, given that, I'd still like to make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve of the design for 646 Hemlock Avenue with the variance to allow front yard encroachment of six feet, four inches into the twenty-foot setback requirement. And two other exceptions for the second story, proposed second story above the garage with six-foot upper setback from the ground level of the ten-foot requirement. I believe that's for the front. And the exception for the north side, second story, zero-foot setback, whereas the required offset was, was it ten-foot? Is there a second? Would you push the little button? Is the board on? This is the very first motion I've made as planning commission.
Okay, I'll second it. It's your very first motion, so I'll have to walk up with you.
Your votes, please. It passes three to two with a ten-day right of appeal.
I think I made my, plenty of comments on fifty square feet being pretty minimal for us intensifying a variance.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number two. Eight twenty-six, Robin Lane, a design review permit to allow for a new addition to an existing single-story residence
Why is this not, I can't, I can't get rid of this. How do I get rid of it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, escape.
No, it's not helping me.
Oh. Escape.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how I got.
There we go. Try that again. Should be all right now.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not. I don't know how I got out of it before.
Should I just escape?
Yeah, it's not working. It's not working. It's not working.
Try a five. Hmm. It's not.
I don't know, it's not doing it. How did I get out of it before? I don't know.
Need a little three-minute recess here.
We're going to take a, a quick break for just a few minutes when they work out these technical issues. And everybody, please refrain from mentioning anything about the warrior game tonight. Thank you.
Oh, is it tonight? Okay, be smarter than the computer.
Yeah, should be a new escape. And nothing pulls up with the mouse, nothing, no drop-down menu?
Want to do a, want to do a Ctrl-Delete and see what happens?
Oh, yeah, do Ctrl-Delete.
I did it before, I don't know why it's not. This is ridiculous. Hit Exit, scroll down to Exit. Here, let me do it.
Oh, use arrows.
Okay, thanks for your patience, everybody. Technical issues worked out. Linda, can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. The applicant for 826 Robin Lane is requesting design review to allow for the addition, for the new addition to an existing single-story residence in a single-family residential R1 zoning district. The project site is located in northwest Millbrae, approximately one-quarter mile south of Junipero Serra Park. Robin Lane is an east-west oriented street connecting to Ridgewood Drive and Redwood Way. The existing residence located on a 6,372-square-foot interior lot was built in 1955 and is described as a single-family, one-story structure. The parcel is owned single-family residential and identified in the general plan as low-density residential. The existing property is a one-story, single-family residence on an interior 6,200, 6,372-square-foot lot. The 1,885-square-foot ranch-style house has a three-bed, has three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, a kitchen, dining room, family room, living room, interior and exterior entryway. There is an existing attached 448-square-foot garage. The, the project proposes to renovate a substantial portion of the interior house and alter the exterior significantly, therefore requiring Planning Commission approval. The proposed design would include demolishing an existing fireplace and most of the interior partitions and provide a new interior entryway, entry hall, and master bedroom and bathroom. Complete renovation to the existing kitchen, dining room, three bedrooms, two full bathrooms, storage closets, and living room. The existing attached 448-square-foot garage will remain, however, will be slightly reduced by seven square feet. A new 530-square-foot uncovered deck will be added to the rear of the structure. The existing roof pitch is 512, and the proposed roof would be the same. In accordance with the City of Millbrae Community Development Department's submittal requirements for residential development, a total of six proof-of-neighbor consultation forms from the adjacent residences have been distributed and returned to city staff. All are in support of the proposed project. Slide shows the existing and the proposed elevations. The existing and proposed side elevations. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a new addition to an existing single-story residence in a single-family residential zoning district, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This project has cleared environmental review, and staff is recommending that the application be approved.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for her right now? Nope. Is the applicant here? Architect, does you or your architect want to come up and present?
Good evening. I'm Daniel Robinson from McCracken Architects. And here on behalf of Dorothy and Eugene to talk about their somewhat modest renovation to their existing home. I will start by presenting just a brief overview of the project. And then if we have questions, I'm here to answer them. And also, the applicant would be more than happy to do that as well. Where we started with this house is it's a fairly.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
You know what? I'll push this in. There we go.
Is the, is there, there might be a handheld over there, too? If that's easier for you.
I'm not going to risk the battery issue.
Okay. Then just stay close, please.
Sure. So, what we've attempted to do is, is this particular project is a very typical ranch house that's very typical of this neighborhood. And there, there's a need on the, on the applicants. The applicants are intending, well, they're, they're halfway through and they're having a larger family. And we also wanted to, yes. Sorry, I thought maybe you should say that rather than me. And there's also the, the, the will to be able to provide some space for parents as, as, as they grow older. So, this, this project, really where we started with it is we wanted to give it a better presence to the street. That was really one of our, our main issues. And then at the back of the project is really where the expansion happens and we're taking the square footage. The intention from the street is to minimize the front of the, the garage door so much. We felt that the existing entry was just kind of set back from the house. It's very shaded by the long eaves. It's very typical of that, that type of architecture. So, we really wanted to kind of bring this up into, I guess, a more modern layout, allow some space inside for an entry, which it doesn't really have at the moment. Remove the fireplace because it's just kind of a knuckle in the middle of the house that, that didn't allow us to do an open plan. And, and then in the rear of the house, that's where the main extension happens again, allowing for almost two master bedrooms. There's one which is larger than the other, but again, allowing that en suite bathroom for parents as they, as they may stay. If there's anything in particular that you'd like me to talk about in terms of materials or, or anything along those lines, I'm more than happy to do that, more than happy to answer any questions you may have. But I will say that we did, we did think about a couple of things, which was, one was going up, going to a second story. We felt that that really wasn't necessary and that we were able to meet the requirements of what the owners wanted to do within a single-story plan. And then additionally, we, we kept respectful of the, the FAR. We're well under the FAR for this project. Wanting to keep, keep distance between neighbors, not, not max out the, the property as, as we might have been able to. And for that reason, it, it just seems very sensitive and responsible in the neighborhood.
Any questions for him right now?
I'm, oh, sorry. A just quick one. The roof lines, so can you, is it essentially staying the same? Or can you kind of outline that where, for more clarity?
See, probably the best thing to do is I'll go to the, the sheet that has the before and after side by side. So, on the left here, we have what, what.
Can you speak into the mic? And then which chart are you on? Which?
I am on A4.0. So, looking at A4.0, there, or you know what? Actually, I'll back up a little bit and I'll go to the roof plan first because I think that might make more sense. So, if I move forward to, I believe, A6.0. A6.0 is where the roof plan is. So, it shows, on the right-hand side of the drawing, it shows what exists now. And that's a large ridge going from east to west and then a smaller ridge at the front and the back of the property. And what we're proposing on the left-hand side is that that ridge still remains on the higher part of the property. But the other two areas that come out at the front and the back, we're going to a flat roof at those areas. And so, where that, where that's most visible is when we go back to A4.0 and we can see the different elevations side by side. You can see on the left-hand side where we've, where we've shown a flat roof at the extension that's coming out from the main ridge. The ridge itself still remains as the highest point of the building. And as we go to the other elevation, which is 401, you can see, you can see the addition here coming off the back, which is the flat roof at the rear. But the ridge here still remains intact. And we're not, not attempting to change that height.
Thank you. And also, the garage door, I noticed on the, on the storyboard, or the board, that it shows that it's going to be, the garage door itself is going to be the siding, but it's painted?
Correct, it's stained.
Stained? So, it'll be stained to what color?
It's a lighter version of the, of the siding that's going elsewhere in the project.
Lighter version of the same. So, it'll be still that brownish, the cedar color?
Correct, yes.
Okay. It's hard to tell on the rendering, because it looks grayish on the rendering to me. So, it's going to be more that brownish color, but it's going to be lighter?
It's going to be lighter, yes, correct.
So, it'll still be a brown, like a tan brown?
Yeah, it'll still be a brown. So, it's, with the stain, it's a semi-transparent stain. So, we're still getting the color of the wood coming through. It's just toning it down a bit. So, I guess you could almost, I wouldn't call it bleached, but it's going, you know, in that direction. It's a lighter tone of the same wood species.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have now.
Can you explain your architectural design intent in having the flat roof and blending in with the neighboring properties versus pitched roof? Or what other considerations did you have in deciding on a flat roof?
Sure. I'll move forwards to some of the existing images. So, here are two renderings showing the, the, well, I guess, three renderings showing the existing versus the proposed. And, and really, one of the issues that we have with the, with design in general is that the, the garage is so prominent to the street. It's, it's the one area that is not very pedestrian scaled. We wanted to reduce that, which in our mind involved reducing that peak. So, we actually went the other way rather than going upwards. We're, we're tearing off a, a peaked roof and, and taking that down to a more manageable height. In terms of how that reacts or relates to the buildings next door, you can see that both buildings here are similar in terms of their, their front elevations. And so, this, I, I think that we're, we're, we're not actually reacting to the additional buildings insofar as we're trying to, to make a connection between them. But what we are doing is we're respecting the scale and the height of the project rather than the, the actual architecture of the, of the 1950s adjacent neighbors. Does that answer your question?
I believe on the rear, rear profile. Can you turn to that rear profile in the drawings?
Which number?
Is it? Is it A5.0 possibly?
5.0 is a section.
It's a section, that's a section. But clicking from that same direction on the rear.
The, the one at the top in, in slide A4.0 is the rear elevation. So, we're looking at the existing current rear elevation on this side and the proposed elevation on this side.
Right. So, the top left, that's the front?
Top, top left, this is the rear facing. So, this is facing onto the deck, these doors. This is a door from the kitchen. And this is a door from the dining room.
Oh, bottom, bottom left is the.
Bottom left is the front, correct, coming from the street.
I just thought if you're trying to accentuate the curb appeal and to accentuate the garage, you might have wanted some arch or something more prominent for the entryway so that it can be more welcoming and more prominent. Yeah, because it looks a little bit more obscure. Maybe it's in black and white. But, you know, it's recessed from the garage still. And it's, still has kind of the square archway. So, it still doesn't stand out as prominently as maybe it might. You came up with some other ideas for?
We did come up with some other ideas. You know, in, in, in general, if we were going to pull that significantly further out in terms of how the plan lays out, it, it becomes a little odd because the, the building itself becomes so, so deep in terms of how we, how we use that space. So, this is, in, in relation to how it is now, it's still set back. The garage is still prominent. It's at that 20-foot setback line. But also, it is worth mentioning that there is a slight rise as you come off the street to this. So, it, it's, it is something that I feel that this is, the front door is very prominent in terms of the, the change in material and the, the overhang that we have. And the fact that it's more of a monumental front door, whereas what they have right now is actually recessed further into the depths of the building. And the, the door itself is very nondescript.
Right. So, I'm just trying to draw you out more in terms of any other ideas. I know you put more effort into having that archway. So, it's, it's nice to be able to have the curb appeal and welcoming for the homeowners. I'm not sure if they really want to attract visitors. But, you know, making, having ideas, making it more prominent would enhance the neighborhood. And, and the architectural style is, is what the flat roof, it gives it more of a, less shape, more geometrically rectangular. So, if there was something, you know, enhanced, then it would draw out more of the focal point, right, for that archway.
Any other questions for him right now? No? Okay. We might have, oh, you do?
Tiny one.
Tiny, oh, he has a tiny one. And a tiny one over here.
Go ahead, please.
I think it's going to be beautiful.
Thank you.
That wasn't even a question. Nice house. Nice design. Just wondering, while, you know, while you go through the whole design process, I don't see any overhang on the roofs. You know, when a typical, modern design would, you know, sort of encompass for part of the roofline design by design. You just haven't thought about doing an overhang?
We have thought about it. And one of the, one of the issues that we have with the, the project at the moment, so many of these projects have that typical eight-foot interior ceiling height.
Right.
And they have the eaves that hang over. And when you're in the space and you've got a six-foot-eight window pretty much in every room.
Right.
You can't see any sky whatsoever because there's always this overhang over the, over the front of the building. And so, what we've done here is all the windows that are being replaced have a seven-foot height as well. So, we've got that extra.
So, the head, so the header height is seven?
Of the windows, yes. The, the interior ceiling remains at eight feet. And so, the intention is, is to not have that overhang because that does block your view of the sky. And suddenly, you're kind of walking around with, with blinders on and not able to see everything around you.
So, you don't like baseball caps?
Got it. Sometimes I wear them backwards.
That's it for questions? We might have more for you later, but thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any?
Last question.
Oh, well, sorry, one more.
So, I didn't see any landscaping designs. Were you envisioning, what type of, or did the owner, did you consider more of a theme for the landscaping? And what type of landscape in the fronts, plats?
The landscaping is something that is being considered, but it's out of scope at the moment because the, the project is actually increasing at the front. So, it's taking a little bit more of that space. And right now, there is no landscaping in, in the front yard. So, it is something that's very much on their bucket list of things to do, but it's not part of this proposal in changing the landscape that exists.
I would encourage the homeowners to consider that more because sometimes when you don't get around to these details, they take years to get done. And now's the time to probably address it. You know, having green, reeshubs and, you know, could really impact and provide more impact and, you know, set the tone for that landscaping and for your home, too. I'd like to pay him one more drawing.
Oh, sorry. One more question for you.
So, the stepping stones, are they permeable?
They are not permeable, no.
Hmm. Can they come permeable?
I think anything can come permeable. It, there, there are questions whether or not that's suitable in this situation. I mean, we can, but we have, we have a, a pretty significant amount of non-permeable, or sorry, permeable space on, on the project. So, yes, that is a, that is a possibility. But it's, as I understood, it was not a requirement due to the amount of permeable space that we do have.
I, I thought we had something that required permeable.
The zoning code requires a ratio of 40 to 60 percent paving to landscape. We don't consider the walkway in that calculation. So, as long as within the, the 20-foot front setback, there's a ratio of 40 percent paving to 60 percent landscaping, we don't require permeable.
We don't require it. I knew there was something. Would be nice, though. I mean, just for the environment is to have more than what is actually required.
Understood, yeah.
Okay, is that it for him right now? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody from the public want to speak on this project? Do we have any speaker slips? Nope. Okay, we'll close that discussion.
Catherine, why do you like this design so much?
I just think it's really, really nice. It's in with the times, and the Meadows is actually some of one design and some of the other designs, so there's a lot of homes that are very modern already, so.
The design is lovely, and I believe I grew up in the same model house you have, so I understand about the dark living room and all of that, and the fireplace in the middle, that's the house I grew up in, not that house, but that model, so I totally get it, why you want to let more sunshine in.
I think the design is a big improvement from what's there, my one concern, I'm a little bit, the garage seems a little bit like a box now to me, and then with the two-tone, but that's the only thing, it looks a little bit, and maybe it's just the rendering, but it just kind of looks like, maybe because of the color or whatnot, and that's why I was asking about the wood door, because maybe that will help, I'm trying to visualize it, but that's one thing that I was, when I first looked at it, I loved the entryway, how that's changed, I think the whole thing, you know, is a great improvement again, but it just, that garage kind of felt like it kind of stuck out to me, so that's one comment I would make for myself, at least.
My only comment about the garage doors, that that wood is very high maintenance, you know, if you want to keep it nice, it's gonna be very high maintenance.
And also to use the nice wood, you know, to paint over it.
Oh, no, you're not gonna paint, you're gonna stain it.
Or stain it, but to stain it, look like it's?
Looks like it's stained.
Very stained. I'd think about something like a clearer stain to bring out the natural beauty of the wood.
Good design, thank you. I would motion to approve the design review to allow for a new addition to an existing single-family residence in a single-family residential R1 zoning district for the property at 826 Robin Lane.
I'll second that. Your votes, please. Pass is five to zero, congratulations, and there is a 10-day right of appeal. Thank you. Okay, moving on to number three, 354 Ludeman Lane, is a design review permit to allow a first, where's my agenda? Design review permit to allow a first-floor renovation and second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the required minimum second-floor setbacks and FAR exception to allow more than the required maximum floor area ratio in the single-family residential zoning district. Sam?
That must just be the roof. Do you want to take these?
Good evening, commissioners, this is a project located at 354 Ludeman Lane, it's a design review permit, request for design review permit to allow a first-floor renovation and second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the required minimum second-floor setbacks and FAR exception to allow more than the required maximum floor area ratio in the single-family R1 zoning district. The project is located at 354 Ludeman Lane, between Queen Anne Court and Seville Court in the Millwood subdivision, within the northeast area of Millbrae. The property is a 6,090-square-foot corner lot, a single-family R1 zone residence with an existing two-car attached garage. This is a photo of the existing home, a single-story home. I'll provide a brief summary of the project, existing residence totals 1,989 square feet, a single-story residence, the proposed project is 3,347 square feet, two-story addition, and the applicant will be adding 1,358 square feet. The setback exception is for the, located on the west elevation and the south elevation. The west elevation setback exception would be, and these are reduced, some of these are, two of these setback exceptions are reduced exception, there are some, I mean, some setbacks, they're reduced setbacks, but they're not the required setback, so for the west elevation setback exception, it'd be four feet, eight inches to five foot, six inches, approximately about 16 linear feet, and then on the south elevation, there would be 16 feet, six-inch linear feet of a zero setback, and then six feet, six inches for a total of 13.5 linear feet, and then five foot, eight inches to nine feet for a 10 linear feet, and these are the setbacks, and it's easier to see with the, while showing the plan, so you'll be able to see that. The FAR exception is 55.8 percent FAR, the applicant, in order to do the design, the architectural design and meet their needs as far as relocating a ground floor bedroom to the second story, is requesting to go over by .8 percent, which represents 50 square feet, the required FAR is 55 percent. And there's five adjacent neighbors that support the project, and one neighbor located to the rear and north of the subject property is opposed. Just wanted to go over a little bit about the staff consultation with the applicant. After pre-submital meeting and initial submittal in July 23, 2018, staff advised the applicant that generally second-floor setbacks and FAR exceptions are only granted by commission due to particular hardships such as a triangular lot, steep slopes greater than 30 percent, or easements. Staff urged the applicant to redesign to comply with the second-floor setbacks and scale back mass to meet the FAR requirements. The applicant did redesign the project to meet the second-floor setbacks on the north elevation, so there was some improvement there, but the applicant wanted to maintain the reduced setbacks on the west and south elevation, and basically trying to design it in keeping with neighborhood residents, neighborhood residential homes. The second-floor area was reduced from originally first submittal 66 percent FAR, down to the 55.8 percent, so this was, in working with the applicant and redesign, you know, reviewing the resumetal redesign to bring it down, the .8 percent, again, is the 50 square feet, in order to accommodate the relocation of the first-floor bedroom to the second floor, and the desired stairway access to the second floor. On April 19, 2019, the applicant again was urged by staff to meet setbacks and FAR, but applicant felt that the design would be compromised and wished to proceed to planning commission with the design as proposed. The reason cited by applicant for the setback exception was for better first-floor to second-floor circulation, also the reduced setbacks have no neighbor impacts as they are located on the street-side corners, so on the Ludeman side and on the, I think it's on the, yeah, on the Queen Anne side, and then the west and south elevation reduced setbacks are designed to create a more balanced architectural design and better integrate with the first and second floors. For the FAR exception, it's a minor, applicant felt it was a minor increase, .8 percent, 50 square feet, to accommodate the relocation again of the first-floor bedroom to the second floor, and location of the stairway, while providing a balanced architecturally proportional design. This is the project data detail. These are the existing site and the demo plans, so this is what we call like a, basically a partial demolition of the first floor, this area here are where the walls will be demoed, and this front portion of the existing homes here, our existing rooms here would be maintained, and the existing garage would stay the same as is, there'd be no change. This is the proposed site plan, the first floor, so the red box indicates the area where the new construction would occur, and this cross-hatched area is the actual additional area on the ground floor that would be added. This is the second floor, proposed second floor, the exception requests would be along this side, and then on this, on this side. This, again, this is a corner lot, so Ludeman is along this side of the site, and then this is Queen Anne, the property line is actually set in from the sidewalk, so there's actually quite a bit more space on this side of the lot, if you consider the, this is what the property line is, but the sidewalk line is out here. The applicant is meeting the setback requirement on the north elevation, and this is the neighboring property building out over here. These are the existing elevations for the east elevation and then the south elevation, and this is the existing garage, two-car garage. This is the proposed east elevation, and the proposed south elevation, the actual entrance to the house is on the south elevation, so this is where the architect is going to be improving the entryway, and is requesting the setback here in order to accommodate this bed, or this room up here, and there are, as I stated in the beginning, there are like reduced setbacks, so these, there are, there is some setback here on the second floor, this portion is gonna be directly over the floor below, but there are reduced setbacks at this portion and this portion, so it varies.
Sam, sorry to interrupt.
Yes?
That portion with the stairwell, it's directly, the wall is directly over the first floor, so that there's?
Yes, yes.
But it does look like there is a setback, because the overhang or the roofline extends out, correct?
Yeah, that, well, there's, but it's, it's built directly over from the, it's basically what that is, is the overhang of the roof, so, because the setback's measured from the wall below, so.
That roof extension doesn't count as a setback?
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Do you know how many feet that is for that roof extension from the?
Yes, so that's going to be, so that would be a zero setback, 16 feet, six inches linear feet, you know, 16, six linear feet for that portion.
But the inset from the roofline is actually gonna be like five feet, yeah?
Yeah, we'll look at the plans, it might be a better idea here. So these are, this is the proposed north elevation and the proposed west elevation, that's the two-car garage. This is the color materials and for the front elevation, the renderings, provides a good view of what the exterior material will look like, the rear perspective, the rear elevation, and this is the Queen Anne side.
Oh, actually, can you go back to the Queen Anne side?
Yeah.
There should be an entryway, right, for here, where's the front?
The, so this is a corner lot, and the entryway is actually on the Ludeman side, so this is the entry to the house is actually on Ludeman, and then the garage access is actually on Queen Anne.
So there is no front entry on the front of the house?
Yeah, the, so this is the front of the house, the way our code is written is basically the shortest lot width is considered the front, however, because this is a corner lot, it was designed with the entrance on the side.
So even though the entrance is, sorry, even though the entrance is on Ludeman Lane, the address is Seville Court?
No, it's Ludeman.
Okay, yep, thank you.
So pursuant to the design review permit findings, after review and evaluation of the proposed project, staff has determined the proposed project meets the required findings for approval. Staff felt that with the setback exception, that the setback exceptions allow for balanced and architectural design with the first-floor design enassing, and as mentioned before, that this would, this design would better accommodate the stairway to the second floor at the entry, and the relocation of the first-floor bedroom to the second floor. There are also other examples of existing two-story buildings on Ludeman Lane and Queen Anne Court that were built with setbacks less than the minimum currently required, including 258 Ludeman, 353 Ludeman, 384 Ludeman, 388 Ludeman, 250 Ludeman, 1300 Magnolia, and two Queen Anne, and three Queen Anne. After review and evaluation of the proposed product, staff has determined that the proposed project meets the required findings for approval. The applicant is requesting the FAR exceptions will allow slightly more than a maximum FAR allowed, again, as was mentioned before, this is for the new stairway to access the second floor, and to accommodate the relocation of the existing bedroom at the first floor to the second floor. This was mentioned by the applicant as difficult to design it, to meet the exact 55 percent, and so he, you know, looked at, you know, revising the design to try to meet exactly the 55 percent, but felt that for these two reasons, for the, to allow for the second floor and to assist with the architectural proportions of the design, that he felt that it was reasonable to be a .8 percent over to basically accommodate that stairway and accommodate the location of the bedrooms. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow first-floor renovation and second-story addition to a single-family residence, and a setback exception to allow less than the required minimum second-floor setbacks, and FAR exceptions allow more than the required maximum floor area ratio in the single-family R1 zoning district.
Thank you, are there any questions for Sam right now? Okay.
So the FAR is at 55.8?
Yes.
And that's how many square feet, 50 square?
50 square feet.
Thank you.
Nothing else right now? Nope? Okay, thank you, Sam, for now? The applicant like to come up?
Good evening, Commissioner, my name is John Mafaro, I'm the architect and co-owner of the house, along with my wife. Paula. Just to give you a little background, we purchased the house in 2008, and we renovated the interior with the intent of, you know, staying in the house for a little bit, and then eventually designing a renovation. I'm the architect and owner of the property, and so now that it's come to that time, we've been in it since 2008, 2007, and the exterior elements, roofing, siding, windows, need to be, they reached their life expectancy, so now it's time for a major overhaul, and in addition, you know, we have two children, we have three daughters, and two daughters are sharing a bedroom, so they're coming to the age where they need their space, so you know, with the, with the needed renovations of the exterior finishes and the added, needed added square footage, we felt that it was time to expand the house at this time. So the design intent was to, because we're on a corner, we don't have any immediate adjacent residences to the, to the south and to the west, I wanted the massing of the house to be on that corner portion, so I located the stair accordingly, in addition to locating one of the bedrooms on the corner to give that massing on the corner, and to give it some nice proportions. With that, we increased the second-floor setback on the north side, which the adjacent property owner has a zero setback of his second floor, so I felt... So I felt, you know, if I maintained that second floor setback on the north, it would create just a, you know, an alley-type situation with no sunlight and what have you. So I, it goes hand in hand in moving all of the square footage towards the corner and the front elevation to give it that proper proportion of massing. In addition to that, there was a, you know, we're allowed on the rear property line a zero second floor setback, so I minimized the amount of that to accommodate increased space between the north property owner. So with that in mind, we, you know, we proportioned the house in that regard to take into consideration the north property owner and, and the property owners to the east in regards to the massing and consideration of, of the second floor setbacks. And here to answer any questions. Now, the, the second floor exceptions that I'm asking for is for the stair at the front of the house. The, the existing first floor entryway or stairwell is setback quite a bit, more so than, than required from the, from the required property line. So we've gone beyond the, the first floor setback requirements on, in that regard, and then we needed a zero, a zero setback because of the stair. We're not able to set back the stair accordingly, so we, we had to go straight up. And we felt that because, you know, we're already setback quite a bit, that, that exception might, might be approved. And, and we're not, and I broke up the elevation on the front at the second floor to minimize the exception requirements. And I did the same thing on the west where I reduced the, the size of the amount that, the exception I'm requesting by setting back the, one of the bathrooms for the second floor And then the exception for the FAR is, I tr, you know, Sam and I worked very hard on this project. I've reduced it considerably and I've taken it down to the, you know, to the max I can without affecting the functionality of, of certain rooms, so. Open it up to any questions you may have.
Are there questions for him right now? Nope? Not right now, maybe later?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak on this? Are there any speaker slips? Okay, could you hint at them? All right, Andrew Wong?
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, just stay close to the mic.
Uh, I'm here seeking a resolution by the planning commission to reject the permit. I live at 16 Seville Court for 14 years in a single-family home with all of my principal rooms facing the backyard. And my garage and a single bedroom are located to the front of the house. That's it. So when I come home, I simply want to be able to look out back and see blue skies, green hills, and with the applicant's proposal, I'm only going to see a mass of a wall on that whole second floor. I think the house, you know, is detrimental to the scenic views that I have today, what partial view I do have with the second floor, it goes to zero. It imposes walls and windows of the second floor that blocks and takes away a major swath of landscape that I can see, that has been enjoyed in the principal rooms. It will impair the desirability for future buyers and occupation of my home. And I do invite the staff to visit my home and actually see the perspective of what impact it will be, because pictures cannot give you the whole perspective. And lastly, I do ask, has the applicant proven that there is no other viable or cost-effective So in closing, I'm seeking your resolution to reject the permit and to preserve the scenic views that still remain.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else? Joanne, can you, Joanne? Can you give him the, there and cue?
I'm Joanne McMahon. I live at 350-
Microphone, please, Joanne, thank you.
I'm Joanne McMahon. I live at 350 Ludeman Lane. I have observed the plans, the architectural plans. I also am on, I'm on the east side of the proposed, of the, of the house. I see no objection with the plan. I have a patio that looks to the, to the 354 Ludeman, and it isn't a problem for me. And also a family room that might be affected, so I have no problem with the design that is proposed.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public comment for now, so we'll open up the questions and comments. Kathy? Mm-hmm. Microphone, por favor. Thank you.
How far away is the property on Seville Court?
So the property at the 16th Seville Court is located at the rear and to the north of 354 Ludeman, so right at the corner. Right at the corner of the, of, of the rear, the rear north, northeast corner of 354 Ludeman. 16th Seville Court-
It's the second lot down.
Yeah, it's the second lot down. 350 Ludeman, the, with the neighbor that just spoke, lives directly behind 354 Ludeman Court, directly, directly behind Ludeman Court. And she has a similar, from her backyard, the similar view, but does not have any objection. I just want to note that the, the concern, I, I did speak with the neighbor at 16th Seville Court. He, he expressed concern about tree views located above and to the west of 16th Seville Court, looking from his backyard above a six-foot-high fence and existing trees that he had, he has existing trees at his backyard and sort, sort of like at an angle, looking sort of toward the southwest, some trees from the Green Hills School. Those trees, staff did research to determine how far away those are. They're 352 linear feet away to the southwest. The new second story at 354 Ludeman will be about 58 to 67 feet away from the existing residence building at 16th Seville Court. That's just some information context-
Yeah. How far away is it?
Yes.
The building from 16?
Between 58 and 67 feet.
Some page six of the staff report. Towards the bottom.
It's pretty far away.
Do you have any more comment, Commissioner Quirk?
No, I'm just wondering if there was any way that some trees could be planted on the Ludeman Lane possibly that would help his view, or is he really talking about much higher?
Sure, why not?
I mean, 57 is pretty far away, but I'm just wondering if there was something that you could mitigate his concerns with some kind of greenery on your side or something?
The, the second floor setback requirement on the east side of the house meets the requirement of the ordinance. I, I've even made it more exceptional by increasing the setback to the north to minimize, you know, any massing that, you know, this particular resident has. The resident directly behind him has a second floor, second story addition as well that was built some time ago with zero setbacks. So, you know, you know, we're dealing with, you know, in grandfather-type design, you know, directly behind him, and then my design that is, you know, that meets the requirements, but-
Because you're a little bit higher, too. Would you be higher than him?
No, I'd be, I'd be, you know, about the same height as the adjacent, adjacent property owner. But the angle that we're talking about, you know, it still will provide them avenue of, you know, of some, of, of some visual accessibility to the trees that are supposedly in question.
Yeah, especially if it's a corner.
Yeah.
But trees wouldn't help him.
Well, I have trees, I have fruit trees along the property line, there's-
In the backyard?
Yeah, and there's, there's trees, you know, in his, in his yard as well, you know. So, you know, and, and we're, we're keeping those below the, below the, the fire. There's a utility pole and utility wires in that, I have an easement along that property line, so you could only go so high with, with the trees to accommodate that.
If I may ask, kind of through the chair, piggybacking on that, so are you, did you prepare this pack, or was it staff prepared? The photos of the rear study?
Prepared all the drawings that you have-
The photos of the rear, rear yard study plan?
Yes, mhm, yeah.
So can you just let it, just clarify, which one is directing toward the Seville Court, the subject property? Which?
Any approach?
Sure, and you can take the-
Yeah, we probably all want to see it.
You can take it and then go back there and then just point out which letter, I guess, of those photos, just so we have an idea. Which one is the one viewing the 16th Seville Court?
It would be A.
A?
Looking from the, from the south-
Your yard.
Looking to the north.
Okay.
A, and then also B, looking directly at the adjacent property owner, which is Joanne. And then if you go to the next page, D is the, looking from our patio directly to the, to the property owner that is, that is raising the issue.
There's no way to put that up on the screen, right?
Is there?
There, is there? And then if I can get that back, please.
Which ones were the letters?
I'm sorry? The A and B? Let's review. A, B, and D, I think so.
I know. I see some points. Yeah, it's, um- Where are you at? I'm looking on that.
So if you look at photo E, this is looking directly, I stood on a ladder, looking directly at the-
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Looking directly at the, the property owner in question, E and F. This is looking directly east, and you could see both property, both properties.
So the issue that the neighboring property has is not that his, your view will be obstructed because you're looking at his house, but do you have a perspective from his house, from that northeast corner looking toward your property?
That would be looking at that back corner, looking that way.
And can you elaborate or discuss any previous discussions you've had with the neighboring owner and any considerations you took in your design to address their concerns?
The, the consideration I took was to design the house farther back of the second floor setback to increase this, yeah.
Say it again.
The consideration was to increase the second floor setback on the north elevation to, to minimize that alley, that dark alley situation and to increase the, the, the voided area between the two houses.
So you did have previous conversations and-
I didn't have previous, I understood his concern and I took that into consideration in, in designing, designing the rear elevation.
And you knew about their concerns from the, the response slips or how, who were their concerns?
It was, yes, there was, it's something they wrote down on the response when we, when we asked, asked their consideration. Yeah. I was gonna ask for some experience.
Was there any other design considerations that you could see that would, might mitigate the impact on their neighboring views?
No, I mean, we've taken every consideration possible by, by moving the massing of the house towards the front, towards the west and the, and the south, and, and, and moving the second floor setback on the, the north side as far away from there as possible. I mean, and massing can't be adjusted, I mean, it's, it is, I've, I've taken every consideration in terms of positioning the massing to, to mitigate any situation that this person may have.
How about the roof pitch? Any considerations given towards?
It's as low as it could go. I mean, we've, we've, we've toyed with that quite considerably. It's a 412.
And can you elaborate a little bit more on the variance that you're requesting on the southern side for the second story setback about why you weren't able to meet that second story setback?
Because of the, the massing that we, you know, positioning of the massing and the location of the stair, you know, obviously the stair needs to go straight up. It's a turn, turn-back stair. So on the south elevation, that, that exception couldn't be, couldn't be avoided. On the, on the west elevation, because of the positioning of the massing, you know, away from the, the north elevation, I needed to elongate the, the plan and to make the area of the, the one-bedroom functional, I had to extend into that second floor setback.
So for us to grant an exception, you know, for our variance, we'd have to have hardship or see some special circumstances such as the Hemlock property, which had an extremely odd-shaped property, but your property is pretty conforming, normal. So can you cite any hardships that might, cited in your favor why we should grant that? Because I don't believe that the staircase placement would be a hardship or a reasonable excuse for variance.
For which variance? The one on the north?
The south, south side, second story setback.
If, if Commissioner Wong, if I may, just chime in for a couple of seconds here. Looking at your 3.0.
You want me to try to find it here?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you can follow that. Yeah, if you, yeah, if you can follow that.
What page?
3.0.
Okay.
You see how your stairs right now, it goes...
South to north? It goes south to north, yeah, turns back, south to north, yep.
What if you tried to turn it from the east to west?
It still would have that situation.
And tuck it down a little bit, right?
It still would have, you would have to have that wall go straight up. You cannot set back a stair. And plus, the stair is already set back farther away from the setback of the store, I mean, of the, the house front by five additional feet. I mean, we're, it's an exception that I don't think, you know, is major here. And it lends itself architecturally to the entry, having that stair at that location.
Because you have both the laundry room and the double stairs.
That was the former bedroom.
What's that?
That was the former bedroom.
Right, I understand. I understand that was a former bedroom. Yeah. If you were to turn the stairs right alongside where the second-floor setback would be...
It would kill that laundry...
And then you'd go, and go east to west.
Yeah, it'd kill the laundry room.
Well, then you'd put the laundry, put the laundry room where that front little section would be, for example.
It would then...
And one side, one side would be closet, the other side would be a laundry room, for example.
Yeah, by doing that, it would then sacrifice the second-floor bedroom.
The second-floor what?
Second-floor bedroom.
Which one? The one that's on the, the one that's on the...
Bedroom number three you're mentioning?
Pardon me?
Bedroom number three.
Bedroom three, yeah.
How would you sacrifice it?
Well, by rotating that stair, it would protrude all the way into that bedroom. Therefore, I would have, therefore, I would have to increase the massing on the north side, which then incurs, you know, a situation that...
So the entire second floor, so the entire second-floor floor plan is brand-new?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, and then you got quite a bit of space to grow north?
Again, we, I try to accommodate the adjacent property owner by, by increasing that second-floor setback to the north, by not having that much massing. I could, I could move that, I could move that north elevation all the way over about another five feet, you know, but then it, what it does is it creates, you know, it just, you know, I'm trying to accommodate a situation that somebody's raised, and it, it does move the, the massing of the house towards the front and the side where I want it in terms of the setting of the, of the, of the house on the corner.
What about you move it towards the east a bit more?
I can't. There's a, I cannot, I cannot go any farther because it's a zero setback.
It's already zero lot, sorry.
Again, you know, Sam and I worked this out considerably, and we've gone through a number of iterations of this whole thing. One, to meet the FAR, and two, to meet the setback requirements. And architecturally, when you look at the massing of the renderings, it really, it really lends itself, the street presence that I'm looking for on that corner on the south and on the west, and it accommodates, if you look at this, this rear elevation, look how much open space I have between the adjacent property owner, which is a zero, zero second-floor setback, and where my second floor starts. I'm looking at the east proposed elevation.
Where are you at?
The east proposed elevation.
Just one, one comment, I just wanted to, as the commissioner is asking questions and going into deliberations, the point I did want to make is, again, this is, this is an exception request, not a variance like the previous one. So the test for looking at those findings is a little bit different than, I think, when commissioners talked about hardship. So hardship is not one of the tests here. So I just would have you just pay attention to the findings as you start to deliberate for, for an exception. Those are found on pages eight and nine, respectively, of the staff report.
I appreciate that. I know the findings for variance is extremely difficult. We're only talking about 50 feet, aren't we, for that 55.8? That being the case, this back wall could just be one foot smaller. You'd still gonna, still have good-sized closet, I mean, whether it's 96 or 90 or 221 square feet. I mean, how much would you have to make this whole wall a little bit shorter? One foot?
Move it in three feet.
Three feet?
Yeah, makes it non-functional.
For the whole thing?
The whole thing, yeah. Yeah, we've reviewed that considerably, even on the first floor at the family room.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm just thinking this might be easier because the first floor is already done, right?
We've absolutely tried that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, lately it seems like we've been getting a lot of exceptions and FAR, and FAR is almost to, the people that created the FAR, you start letting one go, and then pretty soon you're bombarded with FAR exceptions, the same as the other exceptions. So I, since you're building the upstairs, we're talking about 50 square feet. I would tend to think if you didn't make the hallway, take some off the bedrooms, make this hallway a little bit narrower, I mean, we're not talking about a lot.
No, we're not, and...
And I would tend to think, rather than us having to grant an FAR exception, which has always been, after variances, the FAR is the second one. And, and I just don't think it would be a big deal to the sole size of this house.
We, we took it down to the bare minimum, and I respectfully...
How many people live on 1,100 square feet? But that's not the issue. The issue is...
But the issue, well, the issue is making a room functional versus non-functional.
Okay, but the point is, we're talking about 50 square feet. Okay? And when you're spreading it out over this whole wall, and maybe a tiny bit off the master bedroom or number three, I mean, you're building it.
No, you absolutely...
So I mean, whether you make it two feet bigger, this and one there, I just, once again, I have a very hard time having to go over the FAR, and we've had many, many cases, and we've never gone over the FAR.
Yes, you have.
And so, I mean, what he is saying in changing all of the stairway, I could certainly understand, but to take a total of 50 square feet off of this whole top...
Would make it unfunctional.
I disagree.
I tend to...
I respectfully disagree.
I totally disagree with that.
You have a hallway that is six foot wide on a second floor.
Yeah, and the reason...
And you don't need it.
But, sir, the reason for that hallway being that wide is look at the doors and the accessibility to those rooms, okay? The doors need to be that way, and you need proper clearance around those doors to get to those rooms, and you need...
Plenty of clearance there.
But, you know, you're talking about maybe four square feet if I, if I take a half a foot off of that.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, let's say you have the, the southern front wall, the second floor, you tuck it back by a foot and a half.
Still won't get me there. Make those rooms non-functional.
No, it won't.
It will.
I mean, you got, you got a 14 feet, nine and a half inches long of a master bedroom.
Yes.
A 13 feet, 13 and a half, it would be just fine.
But it won't get me to the, I'll still be over, you know, it'll take away from the function of the room.
I strongly disagree with that.
Closet and the bathroom. Telling you. We've looked at it every...
The double sink is seven and a half feet long. Minus five.
Look at the clearance around there and the circulation space you need to make that room functional. Come on.
The master toilet is four foot wide, space-wise. It would do well in the three. There's a lot of room to cut here.
Yeah, I disagree.
Okay.
Okay.
For the neighbor on Seville Court, do you have any other exhibit you can present other than the one, the two photos that we have seen?
Not willing to make any exception.
Those two.
Who took these photos?
Staff, yes, staff spoke with the property owner at 16th Seville, and they emailed those photos. I requested that they...
That should have probably been included in the packet.
Yeah.
These two photos I took from my...
Excuse me, so you need to use the mic in order for you to speak.
Hi, these two photos, the top picture is what I took from my dining room, and the lower picture is from my living room. And from the top photo, you can see that 354 Ludeman is just a roof line at this point, but once the second floor is erected, this entire line of trees and sky becomes a wall, just like Queen Anne Court, and I'm just looking at walls. I feel like I'm not even in Millbrae anymore. Now, as you can tell from the back rear yard, there is Queen Anne Court, our neighbor, and you could tell that there's a wall there, but I do have trees blocking part of that wall. All we're asking for is to preserve what partial view I have, and once the second floor goes up, I don't have any view.
Okay, one second. I'll give you, I'll give you a moment to rebuttal, just one moment. Is that all?
Oh, one more thing. There was no discussion, there was no design collaboration. I just get a letter that said, "We're gonna put this up," and then I just wrote something down, and then the staff sent me an email and just said, "Could you just take two pictures, or a few, from your principal rooms?" And that's what I did. I sent in two pictures, and then I didn't even see it included in the presentation, and I don't understand why it was left out.
Thank you.
Okay. Should we give you a chance to rebuttal?
All I'm gonna say is that, you know, I have a mother who lives at 1265 Millbrae Avenue who had the same problem with views, and she was told by the city of Millbrae, "You are not entitled to view. You're entitled to your home and your surroundings, but view, you are not entitled to." And she was told that when she had neighbors put up homes, put up trees, she had this big, beautiful view, nothing, she could see nothing now. And she was told, "View, you are not entitled to."
Thank you.
Does the applicant want to rebuttal to the comment that the neighbor just raised?
She just did. She's the owner.
She's the owner? Oh, okay.
I'm owner of 16th Seville Court.
I think we understand your situation, okay? Thank you.
That'll give them a little bit more view, too.
So staff clarification for the pictures that were taken there and the view that they show of the trees on Green Hill's property, Green Hill's elementary, clarification that that roof line, is that going to be touched at all and built upon that section? Will the trees, will there be a second story above that roof line in that view?
So if you look at the plans, the second-story plans, on the plan sheet A 3.1, you'll see that on that north elevation, the applicant is providing a...
Sorry, Sam?
A setback.
Back up a hair from the microphone. Thank you.
Second-floor setback on the north elevation will be 17 feet, nine inches. So as the architect of the applicant stated, there's quite a large setback, and that's just the setback from the first floor below. Then you have the five feet to the property line, then you have the additional five foot to the building next door, adjacent. So there's gonna be quite a wide corridor there, allowing light and view toward 16th Seville Court.
So if you look at, my understanding is, tell me if I'm wrong, looking at drawing A 4.3 on the east elevation, proposed east elevation, if you want to pull that up.
You said 4.3?
Yes. So the, the back of the garage right there with the first story, it appears that there's no second story above that back of the garage right there.
It's the family room.
And that, the picture that we're showing from 16th Seville Court, from their family room, it appears that the trees are growing above that roof line there. So if that roof line is not touched, and there's no building on top of that, then they would still have the same view above the...
Yes, yeah, if you look at the angle, because 16th Seville Court is located to the northeast corner of the rear of the lot, so they're looking at an angle toward the southwest, and so that's, that angle will still, they'll still have a partial view of those trees because they'll have that, that wide open space there, the wide setback there.
And was that a design feature, was that in the staff's suggestion and recommendations?
Yes.
On the view?
Yes, that's correct. Well, the architect came to me, and he had spoken with the adjacent neighbor on Queen Anne, I believe it was, who had concerns about the setback and how close the, his, the applicant's second story would be to his home, and so that's why the applicant redesigned it to have it 17 feet, nine inches away setback, to create more space, or more of a setback for the adjacent neighbor. And it actually also happens to assist the view shed for the 16th Seville Court because it allows that view corridor from that vantage point also.
I'm not sure how much discussion you've had with Mr. Wong to explain this, but it appears that that view and the roof line and the trees jutting above the roof line won't be obstructed because the roof line...
There, yeah, there may be some partial, you know, obstruction, but that's, that's the two-story, that's a second-story addition, which is allowed by code to build, you are allowed to build the second story there, and so we are in an urban city. The general plan generally discusses views from the perspective of looking at views of the bay. We don't really look at like views of, of trees like, like 353 feet away, I believe was the, the linear feet of, from that, or like tree, neighboring trees or neighboring lot views. The, the views are, where we try to minimize the impact of views is, you know, views east toward the bay. That's, that's sort of the view that's defined in our general plan when it discusses views. Still, I think the applicant with this design and having that 17-foot, nine-inch setback on the north elevation actually will allow for extra light and some partial view toward that southwest view, view, vantage point.
And then was that also a discussion made so that the owner had a general feeling that he could get a... So that the owner had a general feeling that he could get a variance from the southern side setback?
It's not a variance, it's an exception.
Exception, to get the southern side setback in order to accommodate the view for the northern side?
Well, the, the, I won't put words into the applicant's mouth, but he basically discussed it as far as the stairway and the architectural design, but also, also to accommodate the adjacent neighbor concerned about the setback. And so, that's why he brought it back seventeen feet nine inches.
What I want to be really clear about is just that this whole design intent, with the exception, was to address the view concerns that he specifically had with the staff to address this one issue.
Yes, well, we were looking at multiple issues, looking at the design architecturally of the home, but also to address the neighbor's concerns about the views, or the adjacent setback of the adjacent property owner on Queen Anne. And then, I do want to, you know, apologize to the, the neighbor at Sixteenth Seville Court, that those, those photos should have been included as part of the packet, as additional items. This was a rather large packet with a lot of appendices provided by the applicant. And so those photos would have, and that's why I brought them up to you, so, because they clearly shows the vantage of what the view is during the backyard. But, I do believe that if you look at what those photos show, and then the design, there still will be some partial view and light access toward that, toward those trees.
Thank you.
You're correct. You can, you, views aren't protected. I understand that. My big concern is the FAR, and I really do not feel that fifty square feet off of the back of this house would not reduce the integrity of your design. It's a lovely design. I remember when you did the ones up on Spring Valley, right? So, I, I, the design is beautiful. But I remember then, you had to stay within the fifty-five. So, you did it then, and-
That was a difference.
If you had to take a little bit off here, and a little bit off here, I think it would make such a difference, and it would also help them. Not that that is the main reason you're doing it, because you're right about views. But, if you say you need to take off three feet, and you maybe could take a little tiny bit off of something else, and you took two feet off, I, I, I'm looking at the size of your bathroom. I'm looking at the size of your master closet.
The layout that we have now is the best layout I have. And that's, that makes it functional. And we've met, we met the exceptions, we've met the criteria of, of what we have in front of you, with, considering the neighbors adjacent to me. And that's the layout that I'm going with.
Are you done? Are you done?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I've made up my mind.
Okay. In reviewing everything, there's a bit of a view issue here, but although, I don't think the view issue by itself, it's enough to stop the project, honestly. Personally, you know, when I look at this whole, and look at all the evidence, look at things that have been presented in front of me, okay? I think we need to look at this planning code in a more sort of a holistic way, right? FAR is there for a reason, exceptions are there for a reason, setbacks are there for good reasons. There are many circumstances where we make interpretations of these things with exceptions, because unique circumstances exist. This is a pancake lot, rectangular pancake lot, as flat as it gets, I mean, there's, I assume there's no elevation difference between your property and Sixteenth Seville Court, right? I mean, I didn't see a survey here.
Very minimal.
Exactly, negligible.
Well, yeah, it's minimal.
Okay. So, you know, honestly, I don't see, I don't see a big view issue here, so much, right? But rather, I think, yet another triple exception in this case. I mean, two sides being, you know, over the second floor setback exception, and then an FAR on a pancake lot square, relatively speaking. I can't support it. I think better design had to be done. I think there had to be more hard work that needs to go in, to make sure that we're here to the root to the best we can. The rules are there for good reasons, and I can't support the project in its current state.
Okay, I would, I have similar comments, so in terms of the view to the back, I, I'm actually not, I don't have as much of a difficulty with the easements toward the front, because I think that, I acknowledge that you probably moved it toward the front, to be able to alleviate some of that back condition. And, as mentioned before, it was fifty-nine, what is it? It's about fifty-eight to sixty-seven feet away from the rear line, and then there's an additional eighteen, almost eighteen feet, seventeen feet nine inches setback, in addition to that for the second floor. So, I don't think that will be an issue. I personally don't have much of an issue with the setback exceptions, but I do with the FAR. And it, as it is, it feels like a big house to me. I know it, it has to be, you have to do what's functional for you. But, I feel like there's areas to maybe even alleviate the setback, some of the setback issues, as well as, at the same time, alleviate the FAR issues. We're not here to be designing for everybody, and I think, but, but I just feel like Commissioner Quick mentioned, you know, it's fifty square feet. And even in the front, even in the bottom floor, you know, maybe there's some, there's some area to be able to move it in, like there's the family room concrete pad. And again, I don't want to go into the whole design, I'm just saying, there might be some spaces here and there to be able to alleviate that. Honestly, when I see houses that are bumping up against the fifty-five square feet, it feels really big for a lot, as it is. And so whenever we're up there, it already feels like a big house, fifty-five percent, right? Whenever it's bumping up against that fifty-five percent maximum, as it is, it feels like a big house. This is, and, and I understand you need to do what you need to do to make it functional. I just feel like there is some room to be able to make it work, without having as many of the needs for exceptions. I was gonna ask about even park, is there any room for like a third parking pad or something? Not a garage, but, because there are five bedrooms, right? Because I know that it's not required.
Through the chair, the, the proposed site has a two-car garage, and then there's enough space in the driveway for two additional spaces. So I actually would have enough space for four spaces.
Okay, so that's fine, I'm, I'll leave that, but I just, again, I think with, I don't know if, I'm, I wouldn't be, I'm not really going in the direction of being able to be okay with an FAR exception in this case.
Do you have any comments? We are talking about only fifty square feet over the FAR, and there is some existing easement area that's excluded from the gross lot area. I'm not sure if that's typical, or if it's-
That's all been figured in.
They already calculated all of that.
It's fifty feet over.
Right.
Which is nothing.
I do appreciate the efforts you've taken to work with staff, and to address the concerns of the view. So I think that if you discuss more with the Sixteenth Seville owner, they might be agreeable to that solution. Looks like there's been a lot of work done. And, yeah, but they, I understand that they, you know, it's easy enough just to, just go by the strict FAR rule, and the strict variance rules, and exception rules, and just say we need to just stick by the standards, because else everyone's gonna come in and ask for fifty square foot more, a hundred square foot more, and expect it, expect it to be passed. And it just creates a lot of troubles for our city, and less respect for government and civic process that sets the rules and the public process also. So it's kind of a toss-up. I do appreciate the exceptions that you made to move that, the second story over, and address the few concerns. And the design looks really well thought out, in terms of the massing and architecture too.
Commissioner Joe put it exactly right. Fifty-five percent is generous for FAR, and you've even got a slightly bigger lot at, you know, six thousand square feet. So, you need to bring it under, you need to get fifty-five percent or under. It's just, it's the way it's gonna have to be. I think the house is beautiful, like she said, beautiful.
Again, we, we've taken into consideration the added FAR, and we, we scaled it back as best we can without making rooms non-fenced.
But you never should have come in with a sixty-six percent FAR. And we kept scaling it back from something that was never gonna pass, it's really a scale back, right? I mean, if you'd come in at fifty-seven and tried to get it down to fifty-five maybe, but-
We were, we were overzealous at that time, but we brought it back. And, but when you look at the room sizes and the functionality of the rooms, you can't bring it down anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
I actually beat you to it. Do you want me to take it back?
No, go ahead.
I would continue the project pending further redesign, to bring it back down to the FAR, to the fifty-five percent, as well as try to minimize the amount of setback requirements, exceptions that they seek, for this property 354 Ludeman Link.
Is there a second to it?
Do you prefer that motion, or do you prefer to deny it?
No, you made the motion.
I made the motion to continue it pending further redesign, to bring it back down.
That's better for him, I would think, do you think?
So, that's the-
You would?
Okay, so, should I just reject the vote?
So, yeah.
Please.
The, you have a motion and a second on the, I think, a second on the floor, so you can take that action, and the applicant is free to choose.
Then you can do what you want, yeah.
All right, and your votes?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, so it's a continue, we're voting on continuing-
It's a continue pending redesign, to bring it back down from the setback and the FAR exceptions.
Okay, and then the applicant can choose to just not redesign, is that what?
Up to them.
That's correct.
That's what we're saying.
We'll absolutely make ourselves available to the applicant, to look at more changes, and, and bring it back if we're able. And they're also welcome to withdraw the application if they'd like as well.
Your votes? Okay.
Do you vote?
The motion to continue this project is five zero. Are we good without a break? Everybody good? Okay. Moving on. 527 Cappuccino Drive is a design review permit to allow a second story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception, to allow less than the minimum required second floor setbacks of a single-family residence in a single-family residential.
They must be scared at this point, again.
Sam.
This project is for a design review permit to allow a second story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second floor setback of a single-family residence in a single-family R1 zoning district. Project is located at 527 Cappuccino Drive, between Barcelona Drive and the Sienda Way, in the Cappuccino subdivision within the northeast area of Millbrae. Property is a six thousand two hundred fifty square feet interior lot, with an existing two-car attached garage located at the rear of the house with a side access driveway. Again, the existing residence is two thousand seven hundred forty-five square feet on a six thousand two hundred fifty square foot lot. The proposed project is a first and second floor addition totaling six hundred eighty square feet to an existing two-story residence. The applicant is requesting a setback exception to allow construction within the required upper floor setback on the west elevation only. All three adjacent neighbors submitted consultation forms in support of the project. This is the detailed information in the staff report. Proposed site, going from a lot coverage of thirty-six percent to thirty-eight percent, and a maximum floor area ratio of forty-four percent to fifty-five percent. They have a two-car garage, which is in conformance with our code requirements for a single-family residential. The second floor west side setback would be, again, on the west side, and I'll show you on the slide here where it would be. So, the existing home is built as so, and the second floor addition would fit within the building footprint at the rear. And it's on the west side here. The adjacent property building is located up here toward the front, so the backyard is located here. And there's approximately, it's like about twenty feet to the property line here. So, normally with the setbacks, the concern there is that you want to have for second story setbacks, you want to make sure you ensure that the neighbor's privacy is addressed, and that you're not impacting the neighbor's privacy with, with, by not having the setback. And in this case, on this west elevation, there's, there's no concern or issue regarding privacy. This is the access driveway to the rear attached two-car garage, which is located here. So this is the portion of the addition. This is the existing ground floor plan. Currently, there's a bathroom at this location, and the two-car garage is located here. This is the existing second floor, so there's an existing bathroom and bedroom and closet space with the stairway located here. The proposed ground floor addition would be the sunroom, so the applicant would enclose this area here, which is right now an open space portion. And then the second story would basically follow the layout of the existing building. So this portion here is the existing second story. So the addition is tucked in back here, and the applicant requested the, the exception along this side, so that basically the, the circulation would flow better from the stairway going up. There's an existing stairway to this bedroom here, and it made sense to have the hallway here to access the new driveway, this, or new driveway, new bathroom at this location, and then the new bedroom here at this location, and a rear bedroom with a closet. This is the proposed second floor. This is existing front elevation north, proposed front elevation. There are some exterior changes that the applicant is proposing, architect is proposing, that should add a little bit more texture and variety to the front elevation. It thinks, it's definitely an improvement from what's existing. They are removing the chimney, as you can see in this location. You have the existing rear elevation, and the proposed rear elevation. You can see the proposed addition located right here. This won't be visible from the front of the street, so it's tucked in behind the existing second story here. So it functions quite well as far as sort of matching the existing building footprint. And it sort of makes sense when you look at the design of it, if they were required to do setbacks, it would end up being very narrow, and, and the space wouldn't be able to function if, if they were to do this, the setback on this side. This existing side elevation east, and then this is the proposed side elevation east. Again, the existing side elevation, and then the proposed side elevation. And this is the, the two-car garage. So, after review and evaluation of the proposed project, staff has determined that the proposed project meets the required findings for approval. The applicant is requesting the setback exception to allow construction within the required upper-floor setback on the west elevation. The required setback is four feet on the west elevation, measured from the exterior wall below. The proposed setback is for zero feet on the west elevation for a linear distance of thirty-four feet, ten-and-a-half inches. The applicant wished to design it this way to integrate with the existing architectural style and massing of the first and second floor and to better accommodate the staircase to the second floor, reducing the impact of the existing front master bedroom space and improve the path of travel to the second-floor bedroom addition spaces toward the rear of the building. After review and evaluation of the proposed project, staff has determined that the proposed project meets the required findings for approval. Again, the proposed design with no setback integrates with the architectural style of existing and neighboring two-story homes in the subdivision, including homes with no second-floor setbacks at 531 Cappuccino Drive, 526 Cappuccino Drive, 535 Cappuccino Drive, and 602 Cappuccino Drive. One of the things that staff looks at when evaluating exceptions is that the design of the existing building integrates, the design of the proposed second story integrates with the existing building. If you look at the findings, it's not just the, you know, looking at the difficulties in the design, but also that the building, the proposed addition integrates with the existing design of the building and also is designed architecturally in a way that it fits in with the neighboring homes in the neighborhood. So, that's also something that needs to be kept in mind when evaluating the exceptions request. Staff recommends that the planning commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for a design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the required second-floor setback of a single-family residence in the single-family zoning, R1 zoning district. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions or comments, and I believe we have the architect and the owners here also that can present the project.
Anything for Sam right now? Nope. Okay, thanks, Sam. Applicant wanna come up?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. There you go. Here's the plans. Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Hello, good evening. My name's Adam O'Day. I'm here with Angela and Mike Mullins, our property owners. And they've been Millbrae residents since 2005. They've got two kids in the Millbrae School District. And their goal in this project and working with me is to try to stay here long-term. They really like Millbrae. And one of the things they haven't enjoyed about their home is that only the master suite is upstairs. So, they wanted two bedrooms for their, each of their kids upstairs and a bathroom for them as well. We managed to find space for laundry up there in addition, but that was the primary objective. So, the plans that you're looking at reflect, you know, meeting those needs in a way that doesn't impact the front view of the house, doesn't add a lot of mass in the front of the property. We've got Green Hills Country Club on our, on the rear side of the property. There's eucalyptus trees that are 100 feet tall. So, nobody back there is gonna be bothered by our second-story addition. As Sam mentioned, the second-story addition area does not coincide with double-height structures on either side of the property. So, we're not in the way of anyone's view. We're meeting FAR requirements, lot coverage requirements. And as Sam also mentioned, the second-story setback exception we're asking for, that wall is 20 feet from property line. So, the city ordinance allows for five feet at the first story, seven feet at the second story, 12 feet total for a second-story wall from property line. We've got 20. So, we feel we've responsibly met the general requirements of the city while maintaining the function of the addition. As Sam mentioned, the stair, existing stair leading up to the master suite, if we were to try to maintain a setback for the addition, we'd have to jog our hallway around or do something that would impact their master bedroom. We really didn't wanna do that. So, the plans that you're looking at reflect what is most cost effective for construction and for day-to-day use of the space. So, that said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help however I can.
Any questions for him right now?
Just one quick one, I think. Between the back where the garage, the rear of the home and the rear property line or the fence, that's just concrete or...
It is.
Concrete there? Was there any, and, okay, thank you. And was there any thought into, any discussion about, I know you're not required to have a parking, a third parking. This is the one that I was actually thinking about when that was for the previous project. But if, would it be possible to add, like a parking pad or something back there?
It's concrete now. You could...
Right. So, it could just be used as, and there's nothing there right now?
There is a shed there now.
A shed, okay.
It's not a permanent structure.
Okay. Okay. And then in terms of landscaping or paving or anything like that, is there any change?
There's no proposed change to landscaping at this time.
Okay, or paving or anything else. Thank you. That's all I have questions.
Anything else for him right now? Nope. Okay, thank you. We might have more later. Thanks. I don't see anybody out there who might have a speaker slip. Okay. Well, we'll close the public comment on that. Discussion? Questions? For staff, anybody?
Personally, I'm okay with the easement, 'cause it's in the back area. It's, and, you know, you have the easement as, with the exception request, sorry, for the setback exception, 'cause the addition is just going toward the back mainly. And I think that's, you know, and you just have Green Hills in the back. I, I mean, this is a five-bedroom, right? Am I getting it right this time? It will be a five-bedroom, and I know your children are little, but at some point, it is a bigger home. So, I would, I thought it might be nice, 'cause we're bumping right up at the FAR, I mean, at the requirement for a third parking space, to maybe consider that. You know, that's maybe something that I would put as a suggestion, just to kind of have that extra parking ability. But, you know, but besides that, the design for me, I don't have an issue with it.
It is another setback exception, although it is not something that you can visibly see, you know, when you drive through the front of the house, which is really nice, because you don't get to see all these exceptions that had to be implemented. So, it doesn't necessarily become sort of a really standout visual feature that is obviously deviated from our planning code. So, all your neighbors seem to be okay with it, so I'm fine.
Yeah. You know, the point of those site setbacks are to not keep you too close to your neighbors and not put a box on top of a box. And we've, don't have a box on top of a box, and we're not bothering any neighbors. So, it's hard not to say yes to the exception. Anything else?
I agree. The exceptions are, what you're gonna see from the house is not gonna be anything any different than it is right now. And there's nobody on the backside to look at you either. Because of the golf course, it's kind of...
Except the golfers.
Yeah.
Even they can't see through the tree.
Better make it nice for them. Can't hear you. My ears are, my ears are all stuffed up. Any comments?
So, there's, there'll be no change to the front, no architectural changes or landscaping or any appearance on the front?
The only change to the front of the property is there's a brick facade for, in front of their kitchen, and that's gonna be removed, and it'll be stucco like the rest of the house. Along with removing the siding that's on the existing master suite upstairs, so it'll all be stucco.
From the picture I have here, it looks like the home is well-kept up, nice. And, I'm just trying to think of any other, you know, parents' changes or, you know, improvements for the neighborhood, but, home's well-kept up, and good job.
Perhaps we have a motion? Oh, there it is. Go ahead.
I'm making all the motions tonight, I'm sorry. Motion to approve design review permit to allow a second-story addition to a single-family residence and a setback exception to allow less than the minimum required second-floor setback in the rear of a single-family residence in a single-family R1 zoning district for property 527 Cappuccino Drive.
Second. And your votes?
Oh, wait.
Okay. Passes five-zero. Congratulations. Ten-day right of appeal. Somebody.
Thank you for sitting.
It was a long night.
Yeah. Thanks for your patience. All right.
Congratulations.
Okay, we have a few things left on the agenda. New business? None? Yes? No? Good. Staff updates?
Thank you, Chair. So, I just wanted to give you a few updates. One piece of information I wanted to give you is, if you recall, we had the case at 210 Vallejo Drive that was approved and then subsequently was appealed to City Council. And we did have that hearing at council. And council chose to remand the project back to planning commission and with further outreach and consultation with the neighbors. So, we have conducted one community outreach meeting and sat down with the neighbors to talk about some of those view issues that we had during the initial hearing. And so, we're still working through that, but that will be something that you'll see coming back to you. So, I wanted to give you a heads-up as to why you'd be seeing that again. Yes?
I have a question. I just heard a tiny piece of it, because I was watching the meeting. And the first three people that got up basically said that our numbers were all wrong. And I was wondering, you know, it was enough with those three people saying our numbers are all wrong to just kind of put doubt in the whole thing. So, I was wondering, what's it look like?
But yeah, I don't wanna get too far, yeah, I don't wanna get too far afoul of...
Bringing it back to us?
Oh.
You'll have to save your question. Write it down. Don't forget.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't wanna get too far afoul of that. I just really...
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. The other thing, I wanted to give you an update, is that you may or may not have noticed in tonight's reports, we added an executive summary and also tried to hone in on what the actual project description is. So, we're continuing to look at the format of the staff reports to try to make the information much more succinct, much more understandable. So, I hope that was something that was well-received. If it, if it didn't hit the mark, then we'll keep working on it. But that was the intent behind the new format in the report. So, I hope, I hope that worked out well. Another thing, with this design review process, I think we hear you loud and clear about exceptions and variances. And we're trying very hard to work with our project applicants to really press them on those design issues, and we'll continue to do so. One thing that we have taken the liberty of doing, I'm gonna go ahead and pass this out to the commission. Feel free to give us comments on it, is one thing we thought might be useful as well is to try to standardize the information on the actual project plans. So, Linda's not here, but she took a stab, a really good stab, if you will, at preparing what we are gonna start asking from our project applicants of how we'd like to standardize the cover sheet with all the stats and information so that you'll be able to look to those pages every single set of plans to find the information you're looking for. So, go ahead and I'll pass these out, and then if you have any comments, please feel to, you know, let us know what you think. There you go. We started to talk a little bit internally about how we advise project applicants when they come through the door, that, you know, you are able to make an exception request or variance, because that's an application that is afforded to you under the code, but that there's no foregone conclusion that any of those would be approved. So, we can't predict the level of success in those and that we are gonna work very closely with the project applicants on the design and architecture. So, we're just kind of changing the narrative, if you will, of how those applications will be processed. So, I think hopefully we'll start to see a little bit more of improvement and try to get down to being compliant with our codes. What else? Two quick updates. I know that we've talked about where are we with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance as well as the telecommunication ordinance. The telecommunication ordinance has been pushed back a little bit, and that's primarily because we've been engaged in talking with Verizon, who, as you know, had filed a number of different applications with the city. They've been in agreement to kind of toll those applications for the time while we're working on the possibility of a master license agreement for installations within the public right-of-way, so up on our public light standards and utility pools. So, we're still working through that. We have a draft, a very preliminary draft of the ordinance that the city attorney's office has reviewed. We're getting some more feedback on that. Once we're getting closer, what our intention is to bring that into the commission to talk to you about what the ideas we have for the new ordinance, get your input, do some community outreach, and then prepare that ordinance to take that forward to council. So, that is moving forward. We're a little bit, we're probably about six weeks behind from where I'd hoped to be, but it is in process. And then we just started in earnest on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and this is really representing a nice opportunity for both our housing and planning staff to work together. And so, we have sort of a rough idea of how we're gonna do some community outreach on that topic. We wanna bring forward to our policy discussion for your consideration and input, and then we'll take all that information, and that will help us sort of craft up sort of a draft of what we think the policy changes could be, and then go through the public outreach process there again, and then get that ordinance ready for council. So, two major efforts in addition to, in earnest, really starting back up the general plan and specific plan process. So, Tom and I met last Friday. We've gone through drafts of that, of the general plan and specific plan. We're starting to hone in on some of the land use issues we think that need some improvement on that draft. The idea is to come back to commission to update where we've been, where we currently are, and then probably do a nice town hall meeting with the community to let them know sort of some of the major changes and then get that draft ready for public release so that we can get into the public review. So, a lot happening, and as always, we're here if you have any questions. And then last but not least, we did enroll the entire commission into membership with the American Planning Association. So, that starts up July 1, and we'll make sure that you guys get your planning magazine and all the privileges that are afforded to you with that membership. And then, last but not least, any training sessions that come our way, we'll make sure we pass them along, and then we can have other conversations as we move along throughout the year.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I can get some mini clarification on a couple of things. You know, I appreciate the, you know, the discussion of all those variances and exceptions and, you know, and then really honing on some of the, if you can, you know, in the future, honing on some of the hardship and the design constraint that exists that leads to, at the planning staff level, recommending the approval of those variances and exceptions would be extremely helpful. You know, for those things come before the commission and have all these things gotten beaten up, it's not fun. So, so that's one area that I thought might be a good thing to have. And then the second thing is, I was just, the second thing is the question. It's for the Vallejo Drive, Vallejo Drive? What's the plan going forward? Are they, when are they gonna bring it back to us? And are they gonna be, come back to us after they receive some sort of a mutual agreement? Is that what the plan is?
That is our hope. So, we've been working, we had a meeting with the community. Sam, was it last Monday? I think it was last Monday or Tuesday, we had a meeting, it was Monday, with a number of the people that live in the condominium project as well as the... with a number of the people that live in the condominium project as well as the project architect. The project architect, after the council meeting, went back and took a look at that design again. And so, we're hoping to just kind of get to a place where all parties are satisfied. If we're able to get there. Of course, staff needs to analyze what the formal plans will be that they resubmit. And then we'll have that analysis and bring that back forward to you, just like we would any other design review application.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Depending on what he said, you've already made a huge step forward, I think, in terms of explaining the things. You gave an analysis of the variances of the exceptions. And there were clear-cut information in there. So, I, it was already, it's already a great start.
Okay.
Just keep doing it.
Okay.
That was noticed.
Keep going.
Yes.
Okay. That really concludes my staff updates. Did I miss something? I missed something, I'm sorry.
Brad, let me suggest a deadline for comments on this by the next meeting?
Yeah, it hasn't been an overly time-sensitive. This was sort of our own self-mandated project that we wanted to take on. So, maybe by the next meeting or even within a month, you know, however you want to do it. Our intention right now is to really start talking to the applicants to let them know that we do want to move into a new format. So, you know, we'll roll that out. And then if there are comments and changes we need to make, we certainly can do that. But if you want to give it, let's say by the next meeting. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, colored, perspective, and isometric-type views, you know, would go a long way.
Through the chair, I have just a few, a staff update on the website updates. So, we heard from commissioners and the public, their desire to have more information about our current accessory dwelling unit policy following the California state regulations and the short-term residential rentals. And also, we received, we've been receiving requests from the public on like, how many active projects do we have? Like, where's a list of that? And so, I just wanted to report that we listened to both commissioners and the public. And we do have an accessory dwelling unit website link that provides some information about what our current policy is. And FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions, list there, yes. That's, that's what we hand out to the public, but it's also available on our website. And then our short-term residential rental has the ordinance on there and has a list of the active approved short-term residential rentals. And then just recently, we completed an active development projects list. So, there's a link on there, and we have two lists on there. One for large, larger development projects, includes like the TODs 1 and 2 and then the larger projects in the pipeline along El Camino Real. And then another list, which is the design review permits, active projects. So, you can see, the commissioners can see, the public can see. That's right on the website. Yeah, you go to the community development site and then you'll see the headings, the subheadings of the various topics. And at the bottom is the active development projects. And then there's two types there. You click on either large development, active developments, or the smaller residential design review active applications. And those are two PDF documents showing the actual list. And staff will be updating those periodically as we-
How periodically?
Well-
Which on the hook, but I mean-
Yeah. What staff was envisioning is checking it like, you know, every Friday, depending on like how many new projects we get in. So, at least, you know, every one to two weeks.
Okay. Commission comments?
I had a couple of things. I pulled this out.
We need your microphone.
I pulled this out and it's space for another generation. And this is what San Mateo has implemented. So, I thought it's always good to see what somebody else is doing.
Can't reach.
So, what's a junior ADU?
So, junior ADU, this is defined by the California state bill. And it's basically where you're converting an existing room in a residential zone no more than 500 square feet. And you're converting that into like what is called, commonly called like a granny or in-law studio. And so, that's where you're going to put like a kitchenette and that, that location-
Oh, you put in a kitchenette?
You can put like a, you could have like a stove or sink area and then you have your bathroom and bedroom. That's typically what it is. But it could be no more than 500 square feet within an existing room of the house.
500 square feet is pretty big.
But ADUs can be bigger.
I mean, five, I mean, you get one-bedroom apartments that are 500, 600 square feet. Okay. So, you didn't mention that you're working on the ADUs, right, Brad?
I did, we did, yeah.
The sooner the better. So, if I go to that website, there are some that are on there, then, the ADUs.
So, I don't understand the question. Like, you mean like a list of, no. The list I'm talking about is for design review permit applications that are active and then large development projects. The ADUs, you know, we track internally, but we're not providing a list of ADUs on the website.
Is there any way you can tell us how many you've done?
Yes, we can research that and get back to you. We do have a way to track those. And you would just need to give us a timeframe, like from when, from when to when? And then we could pull up that information and be able to provide that information for you.
Just because I didn't even know what was happening and I thought, hmm. I don't feel really good about that. Okay, I'm good. So, I'll leave this with you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and you do know that we all attended that planning seminar? We all showed up this time, so it's good.
Very good.
You took a while.
Yeah, are you done? I was going to mention that too, that we had the planning commissioner training with the Sematik County and that was, all of us showed up, so that was cool, to have Millbrae represented.
Except we were all over the place, which was good.
No, they spread us out on purpose. But, but I think the other thing that was interesting is that every city in Sematik County has an ADU ordinance except for one, which is us. And so, I'd really like to see that happening. And there, all the other cities have it, so I feel like if we can expedite it, rather than having to go through the whole town, yeah, because they were showing, these are the ordinances. And then there was like one city that didn't have it. And I was like, I know which city that one is. And they didn't, thankfully, they didn't say Millbrae. We're the only ones that don't have it in the county.
But a county has it.
It's not that we don't have an ordinance.
The county has it too.
California's put a law-
The unincorporated.
We don't have a customized for Millbrae.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But there are rules that people have to follow with this.
Oh, yeah.
Like lawless Millbrae.
No, no, no. So, yeah, I'm not trying, I don't want to give the, I don't want to give the impression that we're lawless. Right, that we're lawless, but- Well, I mean, and we're not California. We're, so we have certain things that are specific to us. So, I would just like to, I don't want to get into a whole discussion. I just thought that was kind of sad. I'm glad they didn't call us out for it.
Noticed that. I thought I looked at that list. I didn't really-
I didn't.
One city, they showed a graph and then they had cities that have it. And there's one city, there was a bar, I caught it because I was looking at the ADU and it was, every city had it and then this is a city that doesn't have it. And there was one and we're the only ones. No, they didn't name it. But I just feel like there's already been a lot of work done. So, if we can expedite it, maybe we don't need to go through all the town halls. But, you know, there might be ways to kind of get it a little faster just so that we can design it more, tailor it more, you know, to Millbrae. Because Millbrae is very different, you know, we have different areas that can be worked out. The other thing is that at some point, I would like to get a little bit of clarification in terms of the site visits and what the policy, because I know it used to be, I know you can't arrange it for us. But, you know, I'm not sure if we're supposed to or not. So, you don't have to answer me now, but I would like to get just a formal, you know, on what is it that we can and cannot do. Because, you know, something like Vallejo Court, you know, I felt like I shouldn't discuss anything. But it would just be good to have more clarification at some point, whether now or later is fine. But to be really clear on what are we allowed-
Sure.
Quote-unquote, allowed to do.
Well, let me ask you a question because I'm curious. Has the, have you all on the commission been given the bylaws for the commission?
It's on the Millbrae website.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't know if it resides there, but I have seen that in the past. I'll take a look and I can certainly find out what past policies have been. And if we need to formalize something, we can. I mean, I-
We used to be able to go, if it was requested by, I mean, you know, you just couldn't go ring-
Is your microphone on?
Couldn't go ring somebody's doorbell or anything. But a lot of times, the applicant or someone-
Invite you to-
opposing it would come and they'd say, I'd really like you to come and see it. Because sometimes, one personal look is worth a lot of pictures.
I do agree with that. And, you know, not to want to go back to discussion of the Vallejo Drive issue, but, you know, we did get notification that to go out there and look at the property.
And then we couldn't do it anymore.
We couldn't do it anymore?
No, we got notification to look at the, from the street level, but we didn't get notifications-
Not from the inside of property.
But I-
No, we can't do that, we were told.
Right, but we have to, so it would just be good to have it formalized. I don't think it's in the bylaws because I think initially, we used to be able to go. And then we're just, right. So, so I feel like that can make a difference because, without too much discussion, the project that, you know, that came up under appeal, I think the city council members actually did go to see it. And from what I can tell from what they were saying is that they were looking from the inside of the property. So, I just felt like that would have been good to be able to at least say, then we can, you know, move forward. Right.
Any announcements?
We have a meeting next time? Two weeks from now? Do we know what's on it yet?
So, what our typical process is that after this meeting, this Friday, we'll look to finalize what needs to be on the next, for the next meeting to meet all of our noticing requirements.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to call out kind of on a sad note, the passing of one of our Green Hills Elementary School teachers. Tom Gallagher passed away a month and a half. Tom Gallagher was a fifth-grade school teacher, taught when my kids-
Oh, yes, 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 yes. I did hear about, and it was a very shock or something, too.
Yeah, he was young, younger, very sad, very nice gentleman. I'll miss him.
Green Hills. Do you have kids going there?
Fifteen years ago.
Oh.
Okay. Anything else? We're adjourned.
Meeting adjourned? I can barely hear any. I am so stuffed up.